It's not likely to happen.
And could you just elaborate a bit more on your view of trying to ban road use? And could you tell me if you know any other towns have used to pass a law that would address?
I've seen a lot of draft laws for banning road use, but they're all the same. What they do is they regulate trucks over a certain weight because the trucks carrying the water and the brine are very, very heavy. So there's a cutoff there which might not affect a lot of other trucks, but it does affect any truck over a certain weight. And then what it does is impose a registration requirement and it restricts those to certain roads that they have jurisdiction over. But again, you don't have jurisdiction over 199, so it's not terribly useful. There are other laws that have required repair of roads and looked at the issue of road decay and they are related to the trucks that are registered to go on the roads and so on. So you can get into that and it's more likely than not the repair of roads is something that if you had traffic in the town and if it became a problem, that would be something to look at. Not so much the prohibition of trucks over a certain size, but the actual requirement to repair roads when the damage is done.
And you can only regulate town roads, not state federal or county?
That's right. The town can only regulate town roads. County regulates the town, county roads and DOT regulates everything.
I have another question.
Last question. Do you know if there's any open applications current pending for exploration or extraction in the county?
I don't think there are any. Well, there are none yet with DEC. They haven't issued the regulations yet, so.
They'd be unable to?
They would be unable to, right. There may be leases bought up. I don't know about that. But anybody buying a lease is buying it completely on speculation that they'd be able to do something with it someday.
And there have been rumors that some landmen have been out in the town of Rochester, out in that area, trying to buy leases and whatever. I've never had it verified, but I have heard that that has been going on. Are we on? So we're officially on TV now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So why don't you explain to CB Land?
I was about to say, so basically, should we want to just do a retake? You want to just open the meeting?
Well, I think you should explain that there was a technical glitch. The public hearing began at seven o'clock with an explanation of the three local laws drafted by our attorney, George Rodenhausen. He gave a brief overview of each and we're now ready, I think, to take public comment. And at the end of the public comment, if there are questions relating to the laws, our attorney will still be here to answer them.
And our attorney will speak again about what we're undertaking, the history where we are in the state of New York and what New Paltz is doing, because he's graciously agreed to do that. So with that, we will now go to the public hearing where it's your turn to speak.
Sheet over there.
Yeah, I'm going to start with the sheet over here and call the people as they signed up. But anybody who has not signed up, who wants to speak, feel free when I'm done to raise your hand, okay? So the first speaker is Jody Park Cunningham.
This is Johe.
Oh, I'm sorry, Johe.
Are we going to ask?
What? We did open it. We opened it. So actually, if you could use the microphone just so for the TV cameras.
Okay. Thank you.
If you want, sure. Can the cameras, can you?
Actually, we asked people to stand here and look at the cameras. And also, you know, try and keep your statements succinct. And if somebody has already said what you'd like to say, just feel free to say, I endorse what she said and hear something new.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Johe Park Cunningham and currently I'm a student at SUNY New Paltz. I moved to this town, live in this town. I'm not a commuter, I'm not a freshman who goes home every weekend. I live here, I chose Cunningham as an adult on my own. And I, okay, so currently I am an intern for NIPERG, the New York Public Research Group on campus, our campus is chapter of this organization, which is Environmental and Consumer Protection Agency, our organization if you're not familiar with NIPERG. And I'm also on the committee, the Student Union for the Environmental Task Force. And this past summer, I spent a couple of months canvassing for NIPERG. And so I've learned a lot about hydro fracking and the effects it's been having on communities and the environment all around the country. And it's incredibly disturbing and shocking to find like what has happened and what, how little is being, what, sorry, how little is being done to prevent it from happening in other places. And also the lack of retribution for these gas companies that are causing so much damage to public health and to the environment. So when I learned about this hearing, I just wanted to come here to voice the students' concerns with this issue. We had our general interest meeting last night and I'm the group leader for hydro fracking for NIPERG on campus. And the turnout, the amount of students that came to work with me to volunteer in our efforts and our actions, to speak to Governor Cuomo, to reach a statewide ban, it was just really impressive how many students, you know, young, 18, 19, 20-year-old students are very concerned and are informed about this. So I'm working really hard with the other interns and volunteers to educate as many young people in this town as possible because I think that, you can see here that there's so few people our age. I'm a little older than most people on campus, however, still, it's just, there's a lack of representation. So I just wanted to speak to you all to let you know that there are people that care about this and are working to fight this on campus. I'm one of those people, so you have our support. And the other interns were, sorry, they couldn't be here tonight, they're all working and everything, but I just wanted to say that you have our support.
Thank you very much. If you could leave, actually, before you leave, will you be here throughout the whole thing?
Depending on how long.
Okay, I just wanted to try to get some contact information for you. So, okay. Next, we have Myra Kohong. Myra?
I'm Myra Ma.
Oh, I'm sorry, Myra.
That's quite all right.
It looks like C-O-H. Okay, here, take this.
I'm writing analysis, huh?
Yeah.
All right then, this is ready?
Hold it up, your mouth, and we'll see.
I'm trying to comprehend the work that Mr. Rodenhausen has done insofar as maybe you were given the information through the board or others about civil rights ordinance.
I don't think that's.
It is.
It is.
Can you hear me?
Hold it.
Okay, I'm getting the reverb. So if you have perceived or perused the civil rights ordinance, I wonder if you could address that insofar as the three laws that are in place, which I'm very grateful for, we all are as human beings. Don't know how much enabling can be done towards the industry if these three laws, if they can do something against us with those three laws. And then again, your consideration of the civil rights ordinance, how you perceive it in their eyes and in our eyes to further protect us as a stand, like a backup, a standalone, so to speak, probably can address these things if you would. But I don't want to be out of place. I know that the focus really is on the three laws, but first, our most, our concern was that it would be long-term and overall and that we could really finalize it by blocking them with the civil rights ordinance, which we all are part of, civil rights and not to be poison. So that's basically my concern. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Dan Danner.
And thank you all for considering this as yet another reason to be proud to live in New Paltz. Ann and I, a couple of years ago, took a fracking vacation for two weeks in Pennsylvania. I keep wondering if we need to get a life. And we spoke to everyone that we met about fracking and the most notable result was that we really found very few people in Pennsylvania that are happy. The truck driver, the one of few local truck drivers, most of the cars in Pennsylvania now have Wyoming plates, Texas plates, Colorado plates, but the one truck driver we found that was local should have been happy, but he wasn't because he's under great, great pressure, working really long hours and feels he's a danger on the roads. The innkeeper, whose inn was full, you would think would have been happy, but she had to turn away all her tourists who have been coming year after year and the attractions and tourism spots are really failing because of all of the men who are turning hotels and inns into dormitories. And the woman, the one woman we spoke to who was making money on gas fracking on her property should have been happy and she was about the money, but she was not about the fact that her small country road was being turned into a fairly large highway just to accommodate the fracking trucks that were going back and forth. The other thing that I noted, and I'm a farmer, and one of the big arguments for fracking is to help farmers on marginal farms out and give them a sort of a shot in the arm with this extra money. As we toured around, I saw hundreds of farms that will never be farmed again, not because of the pipes which will be removed, not because of the towers which will be removed, not because of the compressors which will be removed, but the millions of yards of shale that are used for the roads and for the platforms will never be removed. And if they're farming a marginal farm before fracking, they're farming a farm that won't be farmed after. Thank you very much. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Rosalind.
If I sit with my notes, I'll be three minutes. Without my notes, I'll be 20. So let me do, let me just sit and then I'll do with my notes.
Sure, just take this by you.
I'm a single brevity.
Okay, what I'd like to address for everyone is, just so we understand, there's two kinds of fracking. Fracking, vertical fracking, is like we've always seen in the Westerns, you go straight down and you look for oil and gas. What we're talking about today is called high-volume slick water horizontal hydraulic fracturing. And this is a whole different process where not only do you go down, but then you go out vertically. And it's a whole different.
Horizontal.
Oh, I'm sorry. But you go out horizontally, thank you. You go out horizontally in all directions. So this is what we're talking about. We're talking about a drilling technique that has not been done for as many years as they claim. It's relatively new. And the second part is the byproduct. Every time you horizontal hydraulic fracture is a poisonous, toxic, radioactive wastewater. And this is the problem. The problem is every time you frac, you get a toxic wastewater. And that's why we're talking about sending it on the road in trucks that could potentially have an accident and spill the wastewater all over the roads. That's why we're talking about pipelines. That is the crux of the problem. This industry has a process that has a poisonous byproduct and that is the problem. What do we do with the poisonous byproduct? And so that's why we're talking about trucks and pipelines and there's something, a 24/7 hour compressor stations. And basically, for New York State, we're called the Empire State, but we're really the Garden State because New York State has, we have our tourism, our agriculture, our wineries, our camping, our camps, our sports, our hiking. We are really, we are really a garden state. And the one thing we have to ask ourselves is the risk of doing horizontal hydraulic fracturing worth any benefit? Any benefit of the economy, anything? Because once you frac, you can't go back. So that's, that's the crux of the problem is we have a procedure that creates a toxic byproduct that we don't know what to do with. And if we, and also, I've discovered, no matter what you do to regulate or oversight, there's no way it can be safe. And so I'm glad that we're passing these laws. And the final thing that I wanted to say was, well, I think that's it. I think that, well, I guess the other part is that the actual act of fracking and going and cracking the shale that's 400 million years old all the way down to the bottom of the earth, we don't even know what's down there really, is it worth it? And we should not have been in the Gulf of Mexico, the deep water horizon, you can say anything you want, the Gulf will never be the same again. If we have one accident in New York State, one accident, and our water is gone, we will be like the Gulf of Mexico and we will never have our state back.
Thank you.
A comment.
Thank you. Okay, Joanne Myers.
Do I need this?
Yeah, because of the TV cameras, so that would be terrific.
If you just want to sit in the chair, I think they'll pick you up.
I'd rather stand up. Hi, my name is Joanne Myers. I'm actually a carpetbagger for the town of Marble Town, but fracking those to the town boundaries. And I'm also representing Frack Free Catskills, which has members from all over the county. I don't think it's necessary to convince the town board about all this. I commend you tremendously for getting such expertise, legal stuff, because it's very important to have this as tight as possible, there's no loopholes, and every little word has to be, you know, really important, as we see from the Binghamton thing. So I commend you and I don't think that we have to convince you to pass all this. What I wanted to talk a little bit about is something that I've just uncovered, is the situation with infrastructure. And this is an education. We've been working on fracking and well pads and all of that. But what we've discovered, one of our members found out from somebody, the rumor that there was going to be plans for a pipeline to Southern Ulster County. Now, I started to research because that bothered me, I couldn't sleep and I thought I'd dig into this. So we're still researching, but, and if anybody knows anything more than what I'm telling you, I appreciate any kind of information. This is really serious. This is not just a five-by-nine. There has a name. It's called Nimark. The plan is to build a pipeline that will connect the Tennessee Pipeline down in Jersey, then go to the millennial Pipeline in Orange County at the compressor station in Warwick. And there's also plans for a thousand-megawatt generating gas plant in the town of Wayway Onda next to Warwick that has already gotten town of Wayway Onda approval and the FERC approval. That's possible. Then the pipeline would come up through the orange, or not the orange, the onion country. And as I, we've been trying to figure all this out, they're very, very secretive, but it would come up possibly the right way of the rail line called the Maybrook Line. Then it would come into the town of Shangam and would go through Plattekill and Lloyd. And then it will cross the river in the town of Poughkeepsie. And it will go across the river to Pleasant Valley where there's a compressor station to connect with the Iroquois Pipeline in Duchess County. They plan on building a thousand-megawatt gas plant in Dover Plains in Duchess County, which is nearby. And this all has connects. It's called Nimark from Iroquois aspect and it's called the MI Lateral Connector from the millennium. I've been talking to the head of the planning board in Ulster County. I've been talking to PR people from Millennium and Iroquois and the parent companies and it's all hush-hush, sent to Hudson. They're saying it's not active at this time, but the plant, they will not say anything about future speculation when the gas starts flowing from ourselves. This was proposed back in 2009. There was a meeting of the Shangam, Lloyd, and Plattekill supervisors with Iroquois and it's on there. They had an open season for interested parties to express interest. And I found something on the internet that says that there was interest and that they're planning on going ahead with this and that they plan on a completion date, to start I mean, of 2014. They're talking about 36-inch pipeline. They're talking about, I don't forget, I have, and there's pages of all of this stuff. The pipeline across the Hudson would be right by the salt front in the town of Poughkeepsie. I've seen engineering drawings of the thing, it's all very, very Hatch, Ma, and McDonald delivers solutions, is the consulting firm that's doing some of the drawings. They're the same consulting firm that's working for, doing the Spectre Pipeline. They're the 35th largest design company in the country specializing in pipelines and tunnels.
Joanne, you have to.
Joanne, this is about fracking.
Joanne, this is on fracking, by the way, not on.
No, she knows that, she knows.
This is a gas pipeline.
No, this is not fracking.
No, 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 no. She's talking about gas pipeline.
So I'm concerned that if they're planning.
It's just that the public hearing's on the law, so.
Yes, I'm concerned that we look at the broader picture of what's planned and that if there's the possibility of a major pipeline next door in Plattekill and Lloyd, that anything would relate to New Paltz. And we're working on a report of this and if anybody's interested to talk to me, and again, I appreciate, this is all new information to me, and I was concerned that pipelines be definitely included in the resolution.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Ed? Are you going to speak, Ed?
I'm wearing a T-shirt that says, "Only you can prevent faucet fires." Yeah, I also lived over in Marble Town, but you know, I practically rode through New Paltz to go anywhere and you know, I have a long history in this town and the pollutants from fracking know no boundaries. We're basically facing a science fiction world where, you know, either it's going to be a paradise or a hell with people living short, brutish lives. The gas industry has said resistance is futile, it's a war. And you know, out in the areas that are, you know, at the top of the charts for fracking, people are having stones thrown at their houses for having no fracking signs and it's a real battle. It's greed that knows no limits, just like any of the bogus declared wars that, you know, our national government has been involved in. And I think most people here are pretty much familiar with the parameters of fracking, but you know, it's kind of being touted as a cleaner burning fuel, but the study out of Cornell showed that in terms of greenhouse gases, the methane is such a greenhouse gas compared to CO2, that even the small amount of leakage offsets any greenhouse mitigation, diesel fuel in all the trucks and so forth. They're planning 14 LNG terminals up and down the east and west coast. They're not concerned about energy independence at all, it's profits. Natural gases is quite a bit higher in China and Europe and most of this gas is planned for export. It's laced with radon and other radioactive elements, various isotopes of radium and particularly radon gas, which is second only to tobacco for causing lung cancer in New York State, just the amount of radon that seeps through the 8,000 feet or so of shale to the surface in people's basements and whatnot. This will be stirring up massively greater quantities of radioactive elements so that the gas, as well as the air, anywhere near fracking will contain a considerably greater amount of radioactivity. So you know, at some point, you know, we don't want to think this is really a war. And well, no, they can't possibly be that evil spirited, but I see future generations living in a world kind of like Fahrenheit 451, where the few people that care about the earth are living in the shadows and isolated pockets and the whole world is turned into kind of a Orwellian, you know, industrial nightmare. So New Paltz is on the cutting edge. I know that, and the few other towns here in Ulster County. And you know, it may not be easy, you know, we just read that the ban in Binghamton has been thrown out by a court. And it may take some perseverance to save our beautiful area here in Ulster County, but just want to, you know, add my support to any efforts to make sure this happens and in an effective loophole-proof way. And you know, just in conclusion to say, what the hell is the rush with this? I mean, maybe if these guys have our way, we will be among the last generations on this planet, but you know, if there's any kind of future for the human race, you know, maybe in a thousand years, they'll find a way to levitate this gas out of there without injecting all these poisons, but leave it in the ground for now and you know, right on to New Paltz for doing something to prevent anything related to fracking in this area.
Thank you so much. Okay, Michael Jebb.
Hello. Boy, he was so extreme. And I agree with every word. Maybe I just don't look like I would do that. I came up here all the way from where I live in Chester, near Sugarloaf, just above Warwick, just in case any further information, in my opinion, needed to be given. I get the idea that you are, you've already initiated this and drafted this law and if you're going to pass this, boy, my great thanks to you. I guess I have to say, as we heard from another woman who spoke, that I'm a carpetbagger. But I'm not. None of us are because we, of course, have to draft this law according to the needs of the town and the comprehensive plan. But we should all be thinking of the entire state, we should be thinking of the entire country where other states are being fracked or about to be fracked, and we should obviously be thinking of the entire world. You just heard Ed speak about the other global warming elements from greenhouse gases, especially methane, which is 100 times, up to 100 times more reactive than carbon dioxide. And the bit of it that's released from this fracking process means that this so-called clean burning natural gas is, has a dirtier carbon footprint than coal. I imagine you know this, I just want to make sure if anyone sees this, hears this information later, if you have doubts about our concerns about fracking, you need to know this. Dr. Tony Ingraffia, who led the study, which Ed referenced, the doctor from Cornell, boy, I'm going to move away from this speaker and see if this feedback goes away. He just lectured last night at State University in Middletown and I saw him speak there. And as he pointed out, his PowerPoint presentation was made up entirely of slides and information and photos from the industry and from the government, including from NOAA, the atmospheric arm of the government, and in some cases from other scientists, but peer-reviewed studies, other good qualified scientists. And he showed so many studies by the industry, in this case by third parties that they had hired to examine their wells because they lose money when the wells leak. And they show what percentage of wells leak, about five or six percent immediately upon launch, and then many times that amount over 20, 30, 50 years. Now that was, that included offshore wells and then there were studies of only onshore wells and it showed a percentage of those leak. What impresses me about this subject of fracking is what a subterfuge it is. I think it's the most awful idea I've ever heard of and I've been opposing nuclear energy for a long time, but it's not just that technically in terms of climate change, in terms of spillage and dangers that it's bad, it's the subterfuges involved in advancing this idea on its own. The fact that it has a special exemption from the Clean Water Act, this so-called, and very well called Halliburton loophole because of who pushed through that and who makes money from it and who developed this process. The process could not take place if it was not exempted from President Nixon's Clean Water Act. Think about that. And now think about all the other subterfuges, about the fact that banks won't lend if you frac your home. That means if your neighbor fracks their home, you probably can't sell it or get a lease, excuse me, get a loan. That they lie about the leases, that you don't see a penny, if you don't get money upfront, and many people don't, you don't see a penny of royalties until the well makes back twice its cost, which means it's kind of like the way they play the game in Hollywood. A lot of people have 50% and a lot of people that are supposed to get paid with royalties never see a penny. It's exactly like that. The lies about jobs. We've heard Ed mention the fact that energy independence, and not if they ship it overseas, clean burning, not so, over and over. So this, we're not carpetbagging, none of us, because it does relate to the state, it relates to the world. We have to, it's. relates to the world, we have to, it's absurd that we're advancing with this fossil fuel, let alone giving the industry subsidies, we should be subsidizing renewable energy. And the last thing I'd like to say is for everyone to consider that eighty thousand people have written to the DDC, I have to assume the vast, vast bulk of them sympathize with us and with this town. They've heard from scientists, so much the process has been, has been wrong, has been informal, has been unscientific, has been not by the book, and yet they've moved ahead. Environmental groups have met with the governor's office or the governor himself, and it's good that there's been some movement lately, I'm concerned about that as well, but essentially, we haven't made a difference. And I don't think we will until we bring pressure on the governor himself about his future political aspirations, and we let him know that if he's willing to frac with his people and the state, we will block his presumed presidential run. I applaud you for doing what you're doing, and especially for being stewards of a comprehensive plan that calls for this town and this region to remain rural. Warwick, New York also has a similar comprehensive plan, and I can only hope that when we speak to them next week, they also do their duty in maintaining the rural nature and not going on this horrible industrial panel. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, Michelle Dela. I'll open it up after. Yep, I did, Ann, I missed you.
Oh, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I'll call her up after. Go ahead, Michelle, you're here.
All right. Hi, everybody, I'm really glad to be here, and I think more people would have shown up, but I think that the people feel like it's going our way at this point, but it's kind of a dangerous feeling, you don't want to really feel that. When I just saw this today, Binghamton's ban on drilling struck. So, when I read into it, it looks like a moratorium, but still, so this is today's news, so we can't let down our, you know, our guards for this, and we really have to go full speed ahead and remind Cuomo, like Michael, Michael, just said about, we don't want any fracking president, so we've got it. Cuomo, I know he watches this station. And the other thing is unnatural gas. I can't stand when I keep seeing natural gas. It's natural when it's down there. I haven't heard one person say it's unnatural when you use all this crap, these six hundred chemicals to get it up, and the ghost wells, there's about forty thousand ghost wells in New York. Leah couldn't be here, she made me say this. And these ghost wells are just unused wells that, once you frac, it's another way for the methane gas to come up, so that's really, really dangerous. But just refer to it, please, as unnatural gas, because it's natural when it's down there, but not when we try and, you know, get it up unnaturally. And again, water knows no boundaries, like Irene, so that when we're talking about Platteville, Platteville is New Paltz, you know, it's, water knows no boundaries. And I just have this to say to the members of the New Paltz Town Board, we thank you for taking a clear stand to protect our town from the dangers posed by fracking with your efforts to pass a zoning ban, as far as I know, I didn't hear the whole thing in the beginning. By passing this ban on oil and gas drilling before the state moratorium has expired, you have shown important leadership in what may become a protracted battle of home rule versus multinational gas-oil corporations in our state. We urge you to also adopt the Community Bill of Rights, of Rights Ordinance, which we have proposed. We have a right to clean air and water. As you know, such ordinance has been passed in more than a hundred and forty other communities, including Wales, New York, to offer their residents added protection. There are many reasons to pass a CROW, Community Rights Ordinance. Fracking cannot be done safely. Fracking threatens our water supply and our way of life, and is therefore a rights violation. The CROW clearly states this, the zoning ban does not. The CROW, too, would essentially be a backup law in the event that the land use ban is challenged. Three, a law of this nature discourages gas and oil companies from attempting to intervene in the state legislative and electoral process to seek candidates that are favorable to overturn home rule, as they have in other states. They would still have to confront the CROW, which they have proved very reluctant to do. New Paltz, number four, would be added to the growing number of towns across the nation which have passed CROWs. It is not just money which empowers hydro-fracking companies, it is that they act together. Our passage of a CROW makes it an important statement of standing together with other towns. Rochester has just passed a zoning ban and is studying the CROW, attempting to pass this also, for that extra added layer of protection. Woodstock and Olive are also working with both laws. Number five, we would set an example to our neighbors to also assert their right to protect themselves with or without state sanction. Six, by adopting a CROW, you will be proactive and responsible, expressing our town's clear intention that no gas or oil company may come here to exploit our town. Seven, CROWs have a great track record of success. The challenge rate has been only three percent. Of those CROWs challenged, not one which was defended has been overturned to date. And eight, most municipal lawyers don't have enough experience with this type of law. This is why we urge you to speak with the lawyers of the Community Environmental Legal Defense Front for expert advice. They have passed over a hundred and forty-five CROWs. We urge you to continue showing courage and leadership by passing a CROW as soon as possible. Thank you.
Ms. Michelle.
Thank you.
Um, Ann?
Michelle, Michelle.
So many good things have been said tonight. I'm a naturalist, most of my professional life, and so I tend to look at issues from a wider view, and I've been very impressed with this town board, not only with this, but with wetland laws and the way they look at this community in a very holistic way, because that's the way we will survive and lead healthy lives, not only human lives, but our beyond-human citizens and plants that inhabit this area. In our trip to Pennsylvania, I was taken by the whole issue of water and its contamination, and remembering Walter Egan, who was a hydrologist, who said, "Water," somebody asked him, "Tell us about water," and he said, "Water takes on when it can and it flows downhill." And I think that's what's made us realize that we're not isolated, that water will move, and that that's the primary contaminant source that we have to worry about. So, just in concluding, I would like to say that I burn natural gas to cook with, and every time I do now, I think twice about it, and our group, Climate Action Coalition, is working hard to make us all begin thinking about renewables. I know this town board has also been thinking about ways that we can convert away from fossil fuels. Many of us are addicted in this country and in this community, and we need to prevent and work on our addiction. So, I commend all the work you're doing, and also want to just offer whatever help we can as Climate Action Coalition. We're going to be continuing to work on our issues of trying to get off our addiction to fossil fuels, and thank you again for all you've done.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew Dalton?
My name is Andrew Dalton, I live in the town of Shonggum, actually, which is two towns south of here, but still in Ulster County, and I want to congratulate the board for taking action on this whole business. I wished I could get our town board to pay some attention to it. I sit on the Environment Management Council of that town, and we are having a frustrating time with the town board. They think it's not an issue, they have their heads in the sand, in other words, and you do not, it's great. The other thing I wanted to mention, perhaps you already know this, this was just in the paper a couple of days ago. The premise is that the drilling companies say, "All right, so there's methane and well water, we've watched the George Fox movie, too, where people, you know, can set fire to their taps, but there was methane before we were drilling, so how do you know it's our methane? You can't prove it." Well, a couple of days ago, the EPA made a direct irrefutable link between Cabot Drilling and somebody's methane coming out of their tap, I think. There was a chemical marker in the methane which proved conclusively that it came from Cabot. Cabot is, I think, the main company that's drilling around Dimmock, Pennsylvania, so I assume that is the location of this event. Just thought you ought to know, there has been a proof.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have right now for people signed up. Is there anybody who didn't sign up who would like to speak? You would like to speak one more time?
Slight point of information.
Okay, sure.
I wanted to mention about Binghamton. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an expert.
But he is, and he did explain about it, but go ahead.
Good. I heard from a major environmental group just yesterday about that, and what they said was that it was written as a zoning law, and that a zoning law, and you can tell me if this is all correct or not, that a zoning law needs to be referred to the county, that that wasn't done, and that when they sort of got caught in that process, that they then reverted to saying it was a police action, so to speak.
It's backwards, it's sort of true. I can explain it if you would.
Well, Mike, I would very much like you to explain it, but what I want these people and TV listeners to know is that it's not that a ban was struck down, it's that the law was written or processed incorrectly, and it's been stopped on a technicality. It's because the headlines unfortunately make it look like, oh, you know, now it's two to one, we, two towns, Dryden and the other town, have had it upheld, and now we've lost, but we've not lost a major battle in this case. I'd love it if you would explain it.
Okay, so, does anybody else want to speak?
We should continue to the next one. We don't have the reports back yet.
But, so, we have to keep it open, or can we close, or can we just still, when we get the reports to the action? I think it's safer to keep open.
It's safer to keep it open.
Okay, we were just talking about process, because we haven't heard back from the county planning board or the town planning board, so we were just talking about whether we could still just close the public hearing and then just wait to get it back, but we're being advised by our attorney that it's safer to just keep the public hearing open for now, and then when we get back our reports from the county planning board and the town planning board, we might want to report some of that stuff, or possibly have other people have the opportunity to speak. So, we are going to keep the public hearing open, and what I would like to do is, since the camera's on right now anyway, and some people missed what George said, George did start by talking about what happened in Binghamton, and you're absolutely right that when you look at the papers, it sounds like two for us, one for them, but George explained the technicality and why actually that law and the judges upheld the work that had been done, and it was other problems, so I'll let George go back and re-explain on record this topic.
Do we need it?
Yeah. Well, for the...
And I'm sorry, George, can I just interrupt with one quick question? Since it's up in front of, we haven't heard back from county yet.
No, no.
It hasn't gone to county.
It did, no, no, it did go to county, and they were supposed to put it on their agenda last night.
Ah, and we just don't know.
But I haven't heard from them, so I don't know if they did it, they just haven't gotten a chance to report to me, or they had a very long agenda and they didn't get to it, and I didn't have a chance today to catch them. So, they do have it, we just have to wait to hear back, and we have a place about planning board.
Who's on, who is on?
I think it's your former supervisor, if I am not correct.
Is the town, who is on?
January, in January, we, January, we determined, we pointed new Ulster County Planning Board lays on from New Paltz.
So, and then I guess the next question is, George, and if we chose to, though, a supermajority override, not override, but a supermajority goes, surpasses anything the county action takes, so if we voted with a supermajority, would that matter whether we got their decision or not?
Yes, we have to get the decision before we vote, or the thirty days pass.
You have to get their decision, or thirty days.
We'd have to vote to override their comments.
But you have to wait thirty days first.
Thirty days, okay.
Or they get back to us sooner. If they get back to us tomorrow, then we can act.
Okay, I can say that I feel pretty confident that the county planning board will support everything we've done, because the county itself passed a, they did a local law prohibiting brine on county roads, and they're also in the process of doing some more things, so actually, Ulster County...
And I'm sorry, thank you, Susan, because he signed that, where?
He signed it at our Field of Dreams by the Swolchett and stuff, so, so anyway, Ulster County was the first county in the country to pass a law to prohibit, so I really suspect that we won't have any problems, but what I'd like to do is first let George explain once again what this Binghamton Court case was a gap at and why it was struck down.
So, the city of Binghamton enacted a local law, it was not a zoning law amendment, and that was purposeful, and I'm not quite sure why they did it, but the attorney who represented the group that wanted the law presented it as a police power law, in other words, not zoning, but a police power law, and it had a two-year sunset in it. It was passed as a law prohibiting fracking that would expire in two years. It was an unusual way to do it, and it was the wrong way to do it, as it turned out, it was just a mistake made, because the court went through it and they, first of all, they upheld, upheld in a sense, they endorsed the Middlefield and Dryden cases, and they said, "We agree with that judge, those two judges, and so we're going to follow those two," and they held that it was in the power of the city to prohibit fracking. So, that's, it's three zero, and the newspapers don't read cases, they just sort of get a word that it was knocked down, so, but it's three zero on the right municipalities to prohibit fracking. What was done wrong was procedural, it should have been passed as a zoning amendment, as a moratorium, but even as a moratorium, it was inadequate because they didn't make any findings. They tried, I hate to say it, a little bit like the civil rights law, they just tried to pass a law without any basis for it in the record, and the court found that there had not been a basis laid for a proper moratorium law, so they struck it down. It doesn't mean you can't pass moratoriums, a proper moratorium law would stand up just as well as a proper ban. I've always said, I don't know why people do moratoriums, it takes years to figure out you're opposed to this, there's something wrong. But anyhow, so it was a bad procedural effort by that group, and probably will not be repeated. It was a very unusual thing what they had done. And then, about the laws we're doing?
Yeah.
Just to summarize again very quickly, we're, I've done this before, but we are now looking at three local laws, one of them amends the zoning law, that's the law that must go to the planning board and to the county planning board. It amends it with a targeted prohibition on natural gas and oil exploration, extraction, support activities, and the storage or disposal of natural gas, oil byproducts, production byproducts. So, it does that, we define those four areas of exploration, extraction, support activities, and production byproducts very broadly to make sure it includes everything that we know goes on in the industry. The second thing we do is prohibit the use of the production byproducts on town roads and town property as a de-icer, or any other application. And then the final thing we do is we prohibit the introduction of those byproducts into the sewage system of the town district. In my opinion, these are very strong laws, I can't imagine a way that they could be struck down. They are well within the authority given to the towns by Middlefield, Dryden decisions, and now by the Birmingham decision, or Binghamton decision. I have to say that the two cases I mentioned, Middlefield and Dryden, are on appeal, it's always possible the appellate division could reverse them, I don't think they will, they'll probably go to the Court of Appeals. That process will take a year and a half to two years, so in the meantime, I think we have a pretty strong basis to proceed.
Okay, just one quick thing, and then we really have to move on.
As far as the de-icing, I hope that you may reconsider including dust and weed control, because the trucks have been seen on forty-degree days with bright sunshine and no need to de-dice at all, and there's some consideration of use of summer. Another is a question, have you coordinated with the village of New Paltz? And if not, I think that would be a good idea, I understand they're having their public hearing on the tenth, and I wondered what would happen if there is emerging of the town and village on these laws, and who is really in control of the wastewater treatment plan?
Okay, what I can say is the... Okay, what I can say is the, um, village board has our laws, and they're very happy with the laws that we have, so they do have it, they've been reviewing it, and I suspect that they will probably somehow incorporate what we've done. Um, and right now, while we go through the consolidation process, we are looking at all of our laws, and as we move forward, if we should consolidate, I, I think if we pass the law...
Well, I can answer that, because we have, we have a planning and zoning committee that is made up of both village and town planning board members who are reviewing ways in which our zoning and land use regulations are consistent and ways in which they are not. If we are to consolidate for the first two years after consolidation, the current zoning of both municipalities will continue as is, and that will give us time to simply enlarge the scope of whatever laws the village may have that the town would like to extend and vice versa.
Okay.
I can answer the first question, that we, we didn't just prohibit deicing, we prohibited any application on town roads and town property.
Okay, great. So, sure, one more quick thing, and then...
Just very quick, it's about water extraction. In the laws that you've made, um, is the meaning of that incorporated in that, I mean, big time? Like, you can come in and extract, even if you're not allowed to frack, you can come in and extract water for that purpose, and if another town along the rivers, um, agrees to fracking, or it's upheld, not upheld, you know, in the law, and it's overturned and all that, they extract, um, from another part of the river that's not your jurisdiction here or in the village or out there, they, how will that work? And it's a, in process now, is it meant now in the law that you can't extract water? That consumptive extraction of millions of gallons from a well that can be transported elsewhere? I don't know the law of water in relation to fracking.
Well, there, there are laws about extracting water and selling it elsewhere, uh, this doesn't deal with that?
No.
This, this focuses on, um, fracking itself, on exploration and, and extraction. Uh, is something else to take up, to think about, if you want to start regulating the extraction of water in the town, it certainly can be done.
Okay. Okay, so from a procedural perspective, do we take, make motion to keep the...
Yes.
Okay. So would somebody like to make the motion to continue the public hearing?
So...
Okay.
To a date.
To, uh, we will continue it till, um, well, why don't we continue it till our October eighteenth meeting? Is that, uh, that gives us, we want us to continue to our...
Less than thirty days, if we...
What, what's our...
When's the planning board meeting?
I think it's the planning board meeting is, what, the first Monday of the month?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth?
So that, that might work.
Okay. So we can, we can keep it open, we can keep it open, we can keep it open until our town board meeting the following week?
The planning board is not meeting until the twenty-second.
And when's our town board meeting?
The twenty-fifth.
Okay, so why don't we keep it open until that day?
So...
Is that okay?
Yeah, so we're moving it to the twenty-fifth.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And then needs to be clear, you need to be clear what date you're moving this hearing to.
No, no, yeah, no, that's why I, that's why we were asking when you asked about the planning board, we were checking the calendar so we could figure it all out.
So we'll move to the twenty-fifth.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Okay, with that, then we close the public hearing?
No.
No? I mean, we keep, we would close.
We just...
We close tonight, uh...
We continue the public...
We will, we will continue the public hearing until October twenty-fifth, you're all more than welcome to come back, you could bring a lot of the college students who couldn't come here, uh...
Do you want to do that at seven, do you want to do that at seven o'clock?
I'm so, I'm tempted to say it's, well, we're not, well, I'm tempted to say seven...
We've always had public hearings at seven fifteen.
And then what ends up happening, it just seems nobody, everybody thinks it's seven thirty.
That's October.
And then, and the, they think it's, so I'm almost tempted to just say, let's just do everything starting at seven thirty, but, well, we'll publicize it better.
No, because the regular town board meeting starts at seven thirty, so I think we'd have it at seven fifteen.
So we'll do it at seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen. And, you know, we're going to be deep into budget season, we're not going to have a long night.
It's going to be a fifteen minute.
Okay, okay.
So, we, we've already done the EAF on this, because I thought we had to do it prior to...
Oh, did you actually do a resolution on it?
Yeah.
You gave it to us and asked us to do it at that meeting, and you gave it to us and said we need to...
Good, good for you.
So, do we have to redo it?
No.
No, okay.
We did do it. I told me to do that.
And you signed it?
I signed, I did whatever you told me to do.
Okay, good.
I listened, my lawyer tells me something, I do it, so, um, um, let me, I just have to ask Jeff a quick question.
Let me just ask where that EAF is right now. Is it in Susan's hands?
So you don't want to talk to him or... So we'll have another special neighbor on. So, um, okay, so I guess with that, um, I guess we're not going to go into executive session, we're going to wait until Jean comes, so we can have a meeting with Jean.
Do you want to do that? And if this doesn't say that you want to do it...
Well, we're going to do it in executive, I mean, we were if, for the purposes of Jean was here in Kevin, we're here.
But no, I know it's...
Maybe the next meeting.
Yeah, we can do that, well, Jean will be at the next meeting, so we might be able to do it at the next meeting, but we're not going to make decisions until after the budget anyway, so...
Yes.
Okay, okay. So thank you very much.
Thanks, George.
Okay. Thank you, George, so much.
Thank you.
We'll be done in a few minutes, so if you want. Okay, so the only thing, the only thing that's left to do, um, I have, do I have the agenda, Kitty? Just a second. Okay, um, okay, if, um, we can wrap this up and we can, um, Rosanna is going to hand out the budgets, um, to the town board, because technically she's supposed to present it to the town board, so she'll give you the budgets. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay, and then, well, I'll tell you what happened afterwards. Um, this is what I had originally wanted.
Never mind.
Okay, here's a thing that gives you an, an assessment of, um, the tax rate, which, um, it's going down in almost every fund, but, um, since tonight's not really a budget meeting, and I don't really want to spend a lot of time talking about the budget, but, um, you know, we'll do that, uh, when we schedule our first budget meeting, but you do have the budget in front of you, um, there was a decrease in the A fund.
Guys, guys.
Folks.
Folks, guys, if you wanted, guys?
Michelle.
Michelle, if you wanted to talk, go up out there, thank you so much, because you're right in front of the camera and the game picked up unwrapping.
Okay. So like I said, I don't want to really get into long discussions tonight, um, because it's not really said as a budget meeting, it's just for Rosanna to give you the budgets, um, but, you know, um, I just want you to, so you understand a little bit, um, it's really funny, but we kept talking about breaking the library out, and it ends up in our cover sheet, that we always had a line for the library fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, even though it won't really show on the tax bill, you know, as a levy on the tax bill, we talked about doing that letter when the bills go out anyway, talking about the increase of state retirement and other things, and whatever we want to do as a budget letter, um...
We used to have fire.
Wait one second, then, Joanne, you're blocking the camera, okay? Um, the fire is right down here, special fire.
Oh.
Okay, that's just where it always was.
Okay.
And stuff. So, um, because of the fact that we had that line, I did put the library down there so you could see that it's three hundred twenty-one thousand dollars by referendum that we have to pay, and we'll be raising three hundred twenty-one thousand dollars in taxes, but when we actually do the tax calculation, it will be part of the A fund, um, tax levy. So, when you really want to look at the appropriation, and when you go through the work, the, you know, the actual backup sheets, you will see at the bottom that, um, it has the three twenty-one added into the seven point eight million dollar appropriation, and when you, and when we do the tax levy, when you look at this right here of, at the, um, tax rate, it does include the library. Okay, so, does everybody understand that?
The tax rate has been confirmed?
The, the tax rate is confirmed, as of now, this is the tax rate, um, I ran it by the assessor today, and, um, she said everything looked right, and, um, like I said again, if you go to page, okay, if you go to page, well, they're not numbered, because, um, the reason why they're not numbered is because when the system prints them out, they print all expenditures on one line with the number, and revenues afterwards, and I wanted the revenues for each fund after the expenditures, because, you know, they really should go together, so that's why they're not numbered, but at the bottom of, um, the tentative budget for the A fund, you'll see A fund subtotal, library subtotal, A fund grand total, which is eight point one, but it's still significantly less than what we spent last year, um, which was eight point six. So our, um, A fund grand total is eight point one, last year it was eight point six million dollars. Part of that has to do with us moving, um, certain things into the B fund, certain things, I, I mean, into the DB fund and into the DA fund, and doing it according to controllers' guidelines, but we'll get into that more when we start to like sit down and actually really do the budget. The two, there are only a few things I just want to point out very quickly, so the general fund, we've decreased spending significantly, the town outside the village, we've decreased spending and revenues, and why we were able to do that drop, and we'll get, we'll get into it, we'll get into the, you know, the budget details, but, well, you know how we've talked all the time about the, um, developers' fees and the escrow accounts, and how confusing it's been? So what they've done in the past is they've showed the, um, developers' fees as revenue, and they showed the expenses for the lawyer and the attorney.
For that matter, for that particular matter?
No, not for that particular matter, in the B fund, there was a lawyer line for over forty-five thousand dollars, and a engineer line for over forty-five thousand dollars, and that was the money that was, it's the developer's money, it's the developer's money, but it was just shown as an expense, and part of the reason that was done for me, as it was explained to me, was that, um, you could have a project that was undertaken, and then when they get their approval, they might still owe money, but then they don't go and pay the rest of the money to the, um, lawyer or the engineer, or they got denied, and there's no way they're going to come, whatever, so if there wasn't enough money in the escrow account, they would take it out of that line. Well, the taxpayers of Newport should not be taxed to pay engineers and lawyers for a developer's project that is money owed. So what we're going to be doing, and I've spoken with the bookkeeper, I've spoken with Kelly, we will have a meeting with, um, Michael Calamano, the building inspector, myself, um, the building inspector, myself, the bookkeeper, and Kelly, to basically make sure we get a handle on all of the escrow money, then when we have a handle on the escrow money, we will move it into a separate account, and everything will be book kept separately, and we will also set a process up, so, um, whenever the escrow gets to a certain point, no more work gets done on a project till it gets, um, brought back up to a certain level, so the town never finds itself having to chase money, like Kelly's been doing an incredible job with and stuff. So, that's sort of why you see the B fund revenues, and, um, when you look at it versus last year, you'll see the B fund revenues and expenditures are down greatly, and that's why...
Where, where are the revenues in the meat of this?
It would be, um, right after the B fund expenditures, you would see the B fund revenues. After the A fund expenses, you'd see the A fund revenues.
Okay, we used to, I used to see them first.
Well, it used to be at the very back.
We used to have revenues first, okay. So at the end of each expense section is the revenue section, okay.
And in some ways, I think it's really better to look at your expenses and then go look at your revenues, because then you understand why we have to, you know, what was going to be raised in taxes and what we're going to use as a fund balance, so I just think it's a better way to...
Well, Patty's working on this format, right?
Um, well, actually, this is...
Like traditional budget format.
Not, well, um, well, okay, it's part of the problem, which is part of the problem with, with this whole entire, when the report got done the first way, you have the problem with the old system and the new system.
Well, this is the new system, is it going to be shoved into, this is the new system.
Are you talking, are you been talking about the escrows?
No, no, this is, I'm just using a different format.
The format?
So this is, this is the new system, so is, this is supposed to be put into this eventually, it doesn't matter.
No, 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 this is, this is the format, the, this, this exact thing, you know, with the, um, actual...
Well, this is out of Excel, no?
Well, this is out of Excel, it is out of Excel.
No, but I need to put into our...
This isn't, this isn't Excel.
It is not.
No, she did it on Excel.
This is Excel. This is, this is an Excel, this is in an ASCII flat file here.
No, no, she did it in Excel.
Well, you have it in Excel as well.
She did this in, no, she did this in Excel.
But no, Patty didn't do it in this yet, in our budget.
Patty, Patty did it, um, the first sheet that Patty did, um, Jeff, do you think you can come in and talk to it tomorrow?
No, I need to, but, no, but we need it in the budget, because this is what we submit to this, this is what gets submitted to the state.
No, 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 this is, it's actually, it's actually, that's probably, no.
This is just, this is, I'm just giving an example of one of our budget pages, I didn't bring...
No, 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 I understand that, but actually what gets submitted to the state is something that's more, it, it won't look like this when it's done.
Right.
But it is more in this format, it's exactly in this format, no.
Well, it's never this format what gets submitted to the state.
Yeah, but it's, but it's not really this format either.
Well...
Unless...
Anyway...
Okay, I know what you're saying.
Let me come in and talk to Patty, this is not the format we've ever used, but, I mean, Kitty, we've never used this format.
No, I'm a little concerned, because like, I wouldn't know...
This is the format that we've always used.
Except that I'm familiar with some of these things, it, it doesn't say revenues on the revenue page.
Right, Mrs. Shit. I mean, I can do it by count number.
It, it, actually, I'm looking at the revenue page right now.
It has to say revenues.
It's...
Where?
The format we need, I can come in and talk to...
No, that's okay.
It doesn't say revenue.
And I know what you want it to look like too.
But you can see that it's revenue.
Well, we can, but for the average person who wants to have a look at this...
Well, no, I wanted, I did want a tentative, well, revenue conversation, so...
Obviously, this is the format, it will be tweaked in the format that everybody will use.
But traditionally, it has said revenue.
This is the format the state wants.
Well, time out, Kitty, because it should say revenue.
If you go on to like Gardner's website or any, any other county's webs, no, that's the old one.
Certainly the property tax.
This is what I was just handed by Rosanna.
Right over here where it says tentative budget, account description, um, and Kitty's right, it does not say on the top, because it says property tax pilot payment, and it is revenue, and it does not say it, so Kitty is right. So, what I can do, right here, when you see, if you go through here...
Which one, Kitty, do you have there?
Okay, so like Kitty, stay here if you go through the, um, the library one, I mean, you go through this, when you get to here where it goes, where totals it.
Right.
Okay, then you turn the next page, that's the revenue.
Okay.
Now, if we can go back...
Is there, maybe we could get these numbered? God, that's so beautiful.
Well, no, because Kitty, we, I, I, let me come and talk to Patty tomorrow, because this is the format.
Okay, let me just, let me just...
I, I think she moved it into a flat file, which is awesome, because she did, because I think she moved it into a flat file, which is awesome, because she did, because this is, this is getting us closer to putting it under net.
Right, well, what she did, let me go, I'll answer first Kitty.
Yeah.
Then I'll go back to you, then I'll go back to you, okay? She, we can, she might be able to go back in and renumber it, okay? And what she can do, so she won't have to renumber it, it was just my choice of how I wanted, because I think it's better to go through expenditures and have your revenues for each fund right behind.
Okay.
But if she just went out and actually ran it through the system, you know, and it printed, it would print all the, the A fund, the B fund, the DB, the DA, you know, whatever, then it would have all the revenues, and would have all the numbers on the bottom. So we can do that very easily, she could run brand-new ones tomorrow. It would have all the numbers on the bottom, it'll just have all the revenues lumped and all the expenditures lumped. I just, for my purposes, you know, it's like, if you're looking at the A fund and then you wanna go look at the revenues, you know, having those funds together.
Yeah.
You know, so whether she can change it on the computer, I don't know, but, you know, we can certainly.
I just, if we could just get the pages numbered. I, I think this is a good format, but just so when we're sitting here saying on page five.
Well, what we can do is, we certainly can, even if it's hard through the computer, I can just number them, we can make new copies. So it's not that big a deal, okay?
And when we.
So we can write, you know, so we can number them, that's not a problem. In terms of the format, Jeff, what, what I learned today, because when I had done the budgets, you know, again, a long, long time ago, we did have the last year's budget, you know, you know, the last year's budget, then the tentative, the plerian adopted, which is what I had asked for. I was told it was done as a spreadsheet, you know, in a different way, and that you didn't transpose it this way until you handed in your last budget. I was more concerned about just getting the budget, though, than worrying about exactly what format looked in. When I did go back today and look at the big spreadsheet, though, with all these empty columns sheet, there was last year's numbers on all the way at the very end, which I had noticed and everything. But today, when I asked her to redo this, where the complication was, it wasn't complication, it was just, you know, she was so busy doing all the sewer and water funds, and doing all the state retirement, and all those kinds of things, that because of the fact that we trans, we changed systems, last year's numbers were in last year's system, and she had to go back into like the system and cut and paste and bring it over into this, and, you know. Going forward next year, we will have so many less problems than we have this year, because you basically went from, you know, trade-changing systems last year, and it's created a lot of problems and stuff. So next year, everything will be in the new system, everything we've done this year, everything we do next year, so we won't have these kinds of problems with the systems. But that was part of the problem, she had to spend a lot of time today. So like when I even asked her, when she was putting in the 2012 numbers, and she told me, I have to double-check these numbers and stuff, and I might have to make some changes, and I was like, why are you changing 2012 numbers that were adopted? Those, you know, those numbers were adopted, they shouldn't change. So she said, because I had her subtotal all these different categories and stuff, that when she transposed the stuff, that wasn't in the old system. So she had to then go add all the numbers to make sure the numbers were transposing, you know, so each subtotal reflected. When you do the, some of the budget sheets, Kitty, sometimes they have a couple of departments together, and they don't do a control total, you know, as broken up as I did it.
Okay.
Sometimes you might have the, the budget and purchasing all in one line, but I wanted subtotals for every department.
Okay.
So she had said that in order to get these subtotals, when she transposed the information, that wasn't in the old system, and she had to make sure every cell line matched up, and that no numbers were getting put into the wrong place or something.
So I know that in order to get all this data, we've, we've been going to like legal size landscape,
uh-huh.
just to get all the columns, so she might be able to.
We can try to do that for, for when we start to work on this and everything, if that's, we can certainly ask her. Print them any way we want, we can print them on the big gigantic pieces of paper, I don't really care. I just want us to.
Just a quick question about why we're not seeing maintenance charges on the sewer districts, is that?
Um, it's in, what do you mean by maintenance charges?
Just, it says, you know, water for maintenance charges. Mostly I'm looking at sewer six, all the way towards the back, but maybe that's.
It gets folded into, if you look through like.
Yeah, sewer six maintenance charges.
Yeah, but there was, there's no maintenance charges in any, in any of the water sewer funds. It's all folded into, you have it in your contractual, your equipment, and in your personal services. So it's just.
So Kitty, you know what, let me come and, let me come and talk, I'll be, I'm, I gotta go of all places. I have to be, I'll be in Dryden tomorrow morning picking up our daughter from college. I'll actually be in Dryden.
Oh, don't drink the water.
I will, I'm gonna bring up water for my daughter.
Okay.
But I'll be back prior to lunch, so let me stop and talk to Patty.
Sure.
The format is the one I know I've discussed with you and Steve. But like, the format that we used to use is the same one you, you used to use. I'm not sure how we ended up here. But this is the first time I've seen it in this format, but I'll be honest with you. Well, the first thing is, is let's all thank, and Kitty's here, so the two of us can thank you. This is the first time, I think I've been on a board, I've seen a completed budget put in, and all the numbers actually, at first glance, I, I don't see anything at first glance that's making me jump. So I first want to thank you.
Here, here.
I wanna thank you tremendously for that. So I don't wanna seem like the formatting is nitpicking, but I, I think we're, we're getting it to where you used to see it, is still the way we use it.
Mm-hmm.
So let me see where we went to this. Now, the good news I like about this is, this format, though Kitty, I think is getting us a lot closer to getting this web-ready.
Well, I think we're definitely drilling down.
Right, and also, this format also, I think, can get us onto the internet a lot quicker than the other format, because this is in a flat file format that translates easier to the web.
Okay.
So I think we're a lot closer to that than we've ever, ever been. So that's good, but let me see if I can get it back to the landscape format that we've always used in the budget lines, like.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying.
Like our more traditional budget like this.
Right, well, yeah.
And I think that's actually very, more, more valuable.
Well, I actually, well, I actually worked when I did, can you pull that out for a second?
This is not a good example, actually, I have the wrong sheet.
No, no, I know, but, but actually.
You know, the format, I'm talking about this.
No, 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 I understand that, and actually, my worksheets, when I, I can show you, my worksheets were all done on this.
Okay, so I.
So my worksheets were all done on this.
And I think this actually exists, I think this format exists.
Yeah.
Just in another version of this.
So now, the only thing I just wanna point out to the board, because we'll have to figure this out, and I don't, we don't have to do it right now, and I've checked into it, and we could do it by resolution, and we could do it through the process. But I just want you to notice that in terms of the tax cap, we have no problem with the tax cap in terms of the A fund, we have no problem with the tax cap in terms of the B fund. We actually fortunately were able to stay with, under the two percent tax cap in the DA highway fund, even though we moved the superintendent from the A fund to the DA fund, which is where he belongs, not the A fund, he belongs in the highway DA fund. So even with having to move over his expenses, we were still able to stay under the cap. Where you see the asterisks for the DB, we, this is over the two percent cap, and that's because of the fact that we moved a lot of things that were into the A fund into the DB, which belonged to the DB.
Which.
I'm confused about that.
Which I will talk about that one thing.
Because Kevin had given us that for that.
Well, that's why I think we should do an allocation, rather than just moving it entirely from one to the other.
So this is, so this is, so let me explain this to you, and yes, Kevin found some law that actually said that we actually can charge snow plowing to the town.
Townwide.
I mean, town-wide to the village, I mean.
I think, no, I think precise language is important here. I don't think it's that we can, I think it's that we shall, unless we pass an exemption.
Shall, unless we agree to exempt it.
Okay, so.
So it was, was it was shall?
I, I.
Yeah, well, give it back to Kevin, because what ended up happening was, you know, the, when, when Jean and I put it into the DA fund.
I saw that, there was, it was at one forty-one and a half.
Oh, that village town, that, that shows that we can do more. I actually, I actually made you copies of that, that's not what Kevin gave us.
Oh.
Now, that, I found, but Kevin's gonna go get whatever. What that is, actually, I'll read it to you, was while I was trying to research as much as I possibly could, expenses that the town, town needs to, um, um, charge, you know, town-wide, and expenses that can be charged to the village, you know, in the B and the A, and tried to also understand more with like the highway stuff, what we can. I was looking at every resource I had available to me, and in my office is a local government handbook. So I happened to look up village-town.
Right.
And I'll just read this out loud, because I think it's actually very interesting. And that's why I made a copy of this for you guys, because not so much just about the roads, but about the library, and about a lot of other things. So what it says is village-town relations. And I love the first line, fiscal relations continue to be a source of contention between towns and villages.
When was this written, nineteen thirty-five?
Um, I will go back and look at the copyright of the book, so let me read that again. Fiscal relations continue to be a source of contention between towns and villages. Village residents are liable for payment of taxes to the town in which their village is located, as well as to the village in which they reside. Before the advent of the automobile, village residents rarely considered this dual taxation unduly burdensome. However, the need for miles of paved town roads and the rapid growth of population in towns near the state's metropolitan areas has greatly increased expenditures for town highways and highway-related items. The state highway law exempts village residents from paying the cost of repair and improvement of town highways, thus relieving them of a substantial portion of the town highways' maintenance expenses. So that's why general repairs cannot be in the A fund or the DA fund, they have to be in the DB fund. And I'm not sure at one point if they had been mixed and matched or whatever. The state highway law exempts village residents from paying the cost of repair and improvement of town highways, thus relieving them of substantial portion of town highway maintenance expense. Unless exempted by the town board, however, village residents must help bear the cost of town highway equipment and snow removal on town roads. Village residents not exempted from such highway costs often feel that they are being taxed for talent services they do not receive or use, in addition to being taxed for the same services within their village. Villages also regard as inecitable the rent the town may charge for village use of town highway equipment that the village residents have already paid for through their taxation. The question of who should pay for what service has been a source of contention between towns and villages since the nineteen fifties. But it is one which can be resolved through local cooperative action. Towns and their constituent villages often undertake formal and informal cooperative ventures. Many share municipal buildings, as well as officials and employees, or engage in cooperative purchasing, auto maintenance, and emergency vehicle dispatching. For example, one government may provide library, ambulance, landfill, or recreation persons programs to the other at a negotiated fee. So I'll read that again.
Oh, we forgot the negotiated fee part.
For example, one government may provide library, ambulance, landfill, or recreation programs to the other at a negotiated fee. More information on intermunicipal agreements is found in chapter seventeen. So I'll just tell you very quickly what we did, then Kevin can read that, and then we'll ultimately have to make a decision, and we can work this out, you know, later on. But just so you understand the thinking.
Well, the first problem is that you have been here since nineteen fifties. That clearly is what I got out of that.
You're right, because I wasn't even born in nineteen fifty.
There you go, exactly, there you go. Now we have the problem.
So that's the problem, I wasn't around to solve the problem.
And then also the library, although not negotiated fee, was put out as a permissive referendum, so.
But we still, that, we have to pay for that, we have to pay that fee, but that's not to say that we couldn't go into a contract with the village to ask them to pay for a portion of the library, is how I understand this. That we could actually ask the village to pay for a portion of the library, a portion of the ambulance, a portion of recreation, and a portion of.
The problem is that all of those things.
And I will tell you the stuff that we've done.
All of those things certainly benefit everybody in our community, but because they're in our budget, our cap is threatened.
Right, exactly.
Every time those things have to go.
Because the A side is only paying.
Right.
Right, right.
Twenty-four, twenty-six cents on the dollar or whatever.
So let me just, and then I'll turn it over to Kevin on the highway, so not, just not to complicate things. Um, just let me talk about the couple of things we did do in this budget that, you know, the town, what had asked me to split the ambulance cost and put, you know, our portion in the B fund and split it. When I went back and did my research and found the contract that was actually negotiated by myself and Mayor Nyquist way back when, it actually is the town obligation to pay for the ambulance out of the A fund. However, we can enter into a contract with the village to charge back to them the extra, extra number of calls that go to the village. So when I actually went back and researched it, the formula that was done was, you take the ambulance cost, then you look at the number of calls to the village, the number of calls to the town. Then, once you do that, you figure out the town cost and the village cost. But because it has to be in the A fund, and because village residents pay through the A fund, and they pay, at least at that time, they pay twenty-four percent of the A fund's budget was paid by village residents. So twenty-four percent of that cost to the village gets put, you know, is, you know, is already being charged to them, okay? So you take that twenty-four percent, you put it into the A fund, and that remaining money is what the village does in a contract, okay? So for example, when we did it way back when, you know, you know, way back when, well, I can actually say the numbers now. In this particular budget, what you see is a hundred and fourteen thousand, the contract is a hundred and forty thousand, okay?
Is, before you move on from that.
Yeah, well, that we can, I'm using, I'm using.
The contract amount is also a negotiable right now.
Yes, I understand that, however.
We're using what we have.
I'm using what we have right now, okay?
And that's what I need to negotiate with overall cost.
He believes that you, we can go back to the rescue squad and have some more conversations with them.
With the rescue squad, as I was on the.
Right, you know, and stuff, because there is some things about chargebacks and stuff. Now, they didn't submit a budget, I have to honestly say I didn't call them, but they know that we're doing a budget, whatever and stuff. So right now, I'm using their number for the moment, and we can have the conversations between now and November, what we're gonna do. So just using the hundred and forty thousand.
Last year's number?
I'm using, the last year's hundred and forty thousand, okay? Because my expectation, what I look at is there actually.
There's more than that.
I use whatever number it was.
Okay.
Okay, and stuff.
Do we know what that?
So, so.
Go ahead.
So, okay, so you take there, take that budget, okay? We're putting in three-quarters into our budget, because that also accounts for the twenty-four percent that the village residents pay in the A fund, okay? And then that remaining money that translates to cover their calls, I actually put in to the revenue line, assuming and hoping that the village will agree to go back to working the way we had negotiated a while back. What I understand happened when Mayor Duncan was mayor, and he saw that it was in the A fund, he felt that the town was double taxing the village residents and refused to pay for the contract as we had negotiated it and whatever, and took the money out, and the town went back to paying the total ambulance cost. The truth is, it was belonged in the A fund. You just compensate the village residents by taking that twenty-four percent, you know, into account, and then just charging that smaller amount.
Right.
So that's how it's reflected right now in the A fund, that's what we've done. I've spoken, I've told almost every village trustee that we did this, and tomorrow I'm meeting with Jason, you know, so I can explain to Jason what we're doing.
So a hundred and forty thousand.
Of which we're paying a hundred and fourteen.
Seventy-five percent of that.
Is in the A fund.
Okay, which is a hundred and five.
I think it's a hundred and fourteen, but whatever it is, but go ahead.
Hundred and forty.
Whatever, yeah.
Half of that, thirty-five.
Right, I might ask, right.
Okay, so a hundred and five is paid by the town, right? In the allocation, thirty-five is paid by the village. And then the village reimburses the town for thirty-five.
Right, well, the village can, the village could do, the village could do one of two things. No, actually, I can't remember.
Which actually, just so you know, is, and we used to sit with, and Kitty, believe it was it, Peter came from Rescue Squad and did the math, which goes back, I think, all the way to.
To me, I signed the contract with Tom.
And that math was continued to my first or second year here, and then Terry.
Right.
Didn't accept the math, and it always worked out about the same, about fifty-fifty in the calls, right?
Right, right.
So the, your formula that goes way back to, to your days, and Tom Nyquist days.
Right, well, Tom and I negotiated.
And everyone kept doing that, and it worked.
And to add to your thought there, technically then, the way it's split in the A fund, the village would be entitled only to twenty-five percent of the overall calls to the town. The town outside the village would be, would be, have available to them seventy-five percent of the calls. And because the village is getting more than twenty-five percent of the calls, they are getting enhanced service, which gives us the ability to collect that money back.
Right.
So that's the backend rationale.
Right, exactly. So what I can do is, I can, I'll make you guys copies of the contract back from when Tom and I did it, which actually, there's a formula, but funny enough, actually, what I have in the file too is Carol Roper signing off on the contract, which is the exact same formula. And again, you're right, Jeff, that it was followed, that formula was always followed. And then Mayor Duncan sorted the A fund and said, you know, you're charging us twice. But no, it was a formula that was done, and actually, the truth was, the town had always been paying for it. And I asked the village at the time, and the town board at the time, asked the village to step up to the plate and help us, you know, you know, do the cost of the ambulance, and again, it went back to the cost, the police and us bearing the whole grunt, and they stepped up to the plate way back then to enter into this.
In the future, it could be handled by a contract where the town outside the village portion is handed in the B fund, and the village pays their own.
No, no, well, no, the way town law, no, no, the town law is such that if you have a village within a town.
But if you have an intermunicipal agreement.
I think, yeah, didn't, he doesn't say the correct thing, is that we pay, I think Kevin's actually answered this. Is we pay for it out of the A fund, figure out what that amount is they're taxed, which is, let's just pretend it's twenty-five cents or twenty-five percent. We then bill them back for the remaining amount, because they are not allowed, you're correct, under town, under GML, they are not allowed to contract separately, because we provide it.
Right.
But we can have, I don't know if it's a new term, municipal agreement, or it is just a bill back, and they pay that extra.
Well, actually, you have to, if we go to, if we go to this formula, it is an agreement between, between the town and the village. No, it is, I.
That way you can just budget for half of it in the future years.
Hopefully, hopefully, we're gonna, you know what, the way, first of all, my personal belief is, I think the consolidation will come up to a vote, whether the people embrace it, it may be seen, but it will go up for a vote, and I think both boards will support it. Hopefully, we won't be talking about As and B funds and towns and villages down the road, okay? So I don't even wanna enter into that conversation. But in terms of going back to this formula, it will be a contract. I signed the contract with Mayor Nyquist, Carol Roper signed the contract with Mayor Nyquist, you know, and so.
Makes sense.
So, but again, we have to hope that the village will be just as forthcoming, which I think they will, okay? The next thing to, that I was asked to do was with Memorial Pool, was to cut that and put half of.
Can I just go back to the ambulance?
Sure.
Because I see the hundred and eleven thousand in the A fund.
And because if you are not.
not finding it in, the rest of it in B.
It wouldn't be in the B, there is nothing in the B, because we can't put it in the B, it's all in the A fund, it's revenue.
Revenue, okay.
Thirty thousand dollars of revenue in the A fund to compensate for the village, um, for the village, um, whatever, okay? And I'll give you guys, I'll make copies of, um, the stuff that explains it all, um, in terms of the formula and stuff, and so hopefully, you know, I didn't get, I, when I did talk with Brian, I talked with, um, Stuart, and I talked with Arianna yesterday, um, they all seemed to understand it and didn't seem to be.
Let me ask you a question, can you just raise the issue? The amount that you've listed in the A fund is the full contract price?
No, it's not, I only listed in the A fund, um, oh, I know what you're saying, Kevin, I don't know if we went back and, um.
I think you cut it down.
We might, yeah, but then I think Jean and I might have gone back and raised it, let me, um, well, you know.
Because it should be the full now.
It's a hundred and eleven thousand, which seems like about half of.
No, it's, well, it's three quarters, it's three quarters.
Okay, but I'm not seeing anything in village revenue either.
Yeah, I, I have to see, you know, because we went back, you know, we, we went back and forth a couple times, what we might have done is just put that in and not put the revenue in, so either.
So it's net.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, so if we didn't put the revenue in, then we're fine, ambulance, village share, nothing, so we didn't put the revenue in, and we just did it at the one eleven for the moment.
Wait, this is for which?
Right, for, for the ambulance.
Oh, for the ambulance, I'm sorry.
Right, so we're okay, because as long as we can put the revenue in, and we put in the three-quarter rate, we can either raise it up and put the revenue in, or we can bring it at the one eleven and whatever, and I think part of, and I think part of it was Jean and I weren't sure, if, um, I thought I remembered the rescue squad paying, the village paying directly to the rescue squad, they might have to pay us, but if they pay directly to the rescue squad, we shouldn't be reflecting the revenue, so I think we just reflected it that way until we could get to, like, you know, the technicality.
They all do great service and accountability.
And you might be, and you might be trying to talk to them about the budget itself, so we don't know how, how this'll change, okay? The other thing, um.
Morel?
Morel Pool, what we did, um, we were, we were told, I was told, to put, split it in half, split the revenue in half, and put it into the B fund. Um, Jean and I sort of had a long discussion about this in the sense of, um, you know, by doing something like that, and then if the village should choose not to do it, then, you know, the pool ends up getting closed, you know, either, you know, we just refuse to open it, or we say that we're gonna run it for, you know, July, and then if it gets, you know, that's all the money is, and then you can thank the village for closing it in, um, August. We didn't sort of feel like that was the right way to go, but really, what also ended up happening was, when Jean and I did the math, um, it looked like we were, um, going over the cap in the B fund, and we were like, ooh, you know, if we're gonna go over the cap, and then we were also trying to, um, split the cost, you know, there's gonna be so much, you know, aggravation about the cap, it's gonna really get in the way of the conversation. So we actually moved it back to the A fund, but I'll still explain what we did. When Jean realized that we actually, on the count, on the, um, adding machine, there's a two-hundred thousand dollar expenditure that had gotten carried over and stuff, so we probably could move the Morel Pool back into the B fund and maybe knock over the cap, but at that point, what Jean and I felt was better to do, and I actually think that this is a better way to go about it, in the past, when we've shared, um, maintaining the pool between the town and the village, it's always been a lot of problems, which is why the town took it over, which the town always takes everything over, it seems, when there's problems with the village, but anyway, we took it over, so let me just, um, finish. Um, so what Jean and I said was, there's sixty thousand dollars of a loss for the pool, okay?
Based upon this year's numbers.
Right, exactly, and I'm gonna finish, okay, so if you take this, well, actually, not based on this year's numbers, based on the numbers that, um, um, Bill Russell gave us for his next year, for his revenues and expenses.
Well, actually, use this year's revenue, which was substantially higher than last year though.
Well, whatever, whatever, whatever numbers, you know, whatever Members' Bill gave us, it's our expenses and revenues, when Jean and I did the math, there was about sixty thousand dollars lost for the pool. So what Jean and I did was, we felt what was better was.
Which isn't bad.
No, it's not, it's not, but let me, we still think there's some more answers to that, okay? So what we did was, we said, let's put all the expenses into the B fund, into the A fund, okay? But what we did was, we put the revenues in two, but we said that, um, we were gonna ask the village to split the loss with us, so in other words, we'll run the pool, we'll maintain the pool, which is probably better, but we lose sixty thousand dollars to use, cause we own it together, let's split the loss, you pay thirty, we pay thirty. So that's what this budget reflects.
Cause you have the revenues in the A fund.
Yeah, because we'd be getting it right, okay?
No, I see, no, I see, okay, yeah.
Okay, so that's what we did, cause we felt that that actually accomplishes what we're trying to do, that it's not being so, um, extreme, in a sense, and whatever, and it's, again, it's something we could talk to the village, and saying to the village, just split the loss with us, but let me also just go to the next step, okay? When you actually look at the rates for the pool, okay, like a family rate for the summit being a hundred and sixty-five dollars, and you look at some of the other rates for the outside users and stuff, Jean did feel that we could possibly raise the rates, and that people would still use the pool, and we could close the gap of the sixty thousand dollars we're losing, and make it more revenue neutral in a sense. So that is a conversation we will have with the village board and ourselves together as we, you know, move forward through this budget, so it might be splitting at thirty-thirty, if they agree, you know, thirty thousand, thirty thousand, maybe we can then set down to it's only a forty thousand loss, or thirty thousand loss.
That'd be great.
So we, so we need to have that conversation now, just so I can, just, yesterday when I talked to Arianna and Stuart, okay, and explained this, they said, well, if we're gonna split the loss with you, aren't we, we're gonna wanna have some control over the pool? And I said, I understand that, and I agree, and I said, but, and she said, right now, we're all getting along, but what happens in a future board? So I said that, well, right now, you've got that subcommittee of the two of you, and, um, Arianna and Stuart, and I said, we can concretize that committee, in other words, so in our organizational meeting, we appoint a rep, you know, a Morel Pool.
Zars.
Zars, and the village does their zars kind of stuff, and it's concretized that you have to have those four people talking, and then the two boards talk to each other about, you know, what they wanna see in terms of how they move forward with Morel Pool, so the village feels that they have some say if they're gonna be, you know, helping, you know, you know, losing some of the rev, you know, giving us some revenue. So they both thought that was a great idea, they both loved that idea, and they seemed to be receptive to the fact that this might be the way to sort of solve the problem, so.
Does that get, uh, the, the whole situation of having to get approvals for repairs and all that stuff? I mean, that, that's been the real sticking point in the past, is that Bill comes up.
From Bill, what you're saying, Kitty, his list of what needs to be done, plus capital improvements, we should just use those numbers to figure out what the relative loss is for each town and village government, and then just each year evaluate it as the budget process goes along, and then the village will be on notice for their made budget so they can plan for it.
Right, exactly.
And, you know, in, in deference to Bill, Bill always has provided us with that list.
But then something, an emergency happens, and we still haven't gotten reimbursed for most of them.
And Kitty's frustration, my frustration, and, but I think we do have a different board, and I think we have a different understanding, cause our, our community has been speaking a lot louder than they have in the past, is that they've always had the first right of refusal, so we would go to them and say, a pump blew up, we need twenty, five thousand dollars, we need twenty-five hundred dollars, and their answer would be?
No.
And then what do we do?
So, so we've been, we've been just.
To your point, what do we do?
Mm-hmm, what, what do we do?
We pay the bill, we just, well, in the past, we've always just said, fine, we pay the bill.
How do we move on from that?
Well, I think.
So how we move on from that, in my opinion, is that there's a better relationship, and once you repair the relationship, it should go well for years, until some administration comes along and ruins it again, okay?
So can we, can we sunset the old contract that says?
The non-contract?
We don't have a contract.
Right.
I thought we did until the end of this year.
Did we do it till the end of this year? I don't remember, cause I wasn't pretty happy about it.
We don't have a contract.
Because we were gonna get them to.
So, so if, if we could just have this committee meet when there's an emergency, and say, yes, we agree that the railing has to be replaced, um, so that, that's just done, and when this committee signs off and makes a recommendation, there's no arguing about whether or not it gets done.
And there's other little ways to affect your budgetary parameters each year, so that you have some flexibility with those things going forward, when you do your budget. So, I mean, there's ways that we can massage that, get that.
And I think to Kevin's point, I think, you know, one thing is, and I would agree with the village on this, and I think you would, is, I don't know if we've had enough of input on, maybe we need to look harder at membership rates, maybe we need to look a little harder at, you know, the concession rates down there.
Yeah.
These are things that we need to look, and I'm more than happy to sit and look at them with the village.
And tweaking them just a little might make a big difference.
I don't think we've got any pushback from non-resident rates this year.
Right, and what we don't wanna do is charge village residents at a higher rate than we charge town residents for use, correct? That's our policy, we want to be fair, we don't wanna charge a hundred and fifty percent of, you know, we don't charge them, we wanna be fair, don't.
Well, only a hundred and fifty percent if they use the water in the pool.
Actually, one of the things, one of the things I would like to make sure that when we do go through the, um, contract again, cause I think right now, I think we do pay for the water, um, water.
It comes out of the hydrant there, actually, it comes out of the hydrant, the corner water.
Which means it's.
Now, not during the season, that's the, the original fill, the first fill comes out, now, as we.
And we don't get charged.
But as we fill it during the season, cause there's this little thing called evaporation in loss.
Some of these kinds of things have to be like, you know, um.
Maybe we need to look at the metering on that, cause that is.
We jointly share it, you know, we're assuming all the, you know, the running of it and stuff, right now, we're assuming the loss, and part of that loss is paying for the village, for the water.
You brought that up the other night, when you were looking at it, and you were right, I never looked at that, the water bill is tremendous down there during the season.
So maybe under our new agreement, the village will pay the water bill at Morel?
Well, or, I just.
We have to do, we have to do the math, yeah.
It's part of the expense, but it's at the village rate, not at the town rate, like a hundred and fifty percent.
Well, I don't even think, well, I mean, I don't wanna get into this right now, and we can talk about it another time, I don't even think there should be any charge, but that's my personal.
Well, the bottom line is, the pool probably offers the highest recreational utility for the money than any other recreation you offer in the town.
It's also, it's also the only recreation in the town that I can honestly say saves lives, one of the biggest killers of, of children is drowning, and it truly is, it truly is a life-saving recreational opportunity in our community.
So anyway, I think right now, doing it this way is less confrontational, um, I think it's more, you know, going in and saying to the village, we're partners in this, and, you know, we'd like you to just share our losses, as opposed to saying, we put half of it in the B fund, and, you know, if, you know, if you don't put it, if you don't put it in your budget next year, the pool's not getting opened, so I think this is, you know, I mean, luckily, in a way, it was a mistake when we did it, that there was two-hundred thousand dollars on the, on the adding tape that made Jean go, oh my God, we're, you know, we have to raise the cap, and we moved it back, and then when we realized there was a mistake, and we talked about moving it back to the B fund, we had a whole conversation, said, you know what, this is really a better way to do it anyway, so let's just leave it there, and I, I think it really is, and having talked to a lot of the village people, and then I'll talk to Jason tomorrow, you know, they all seemed to understand the thinking and didn't, you know, there was no real pushback by any means whatsoever, so hopefully, when we have the conversation, okay, so the only other things that I really wanna explain.
Where are our personal services for Morel?
They're in a different line.
Oh, yeah, it is.
They're not.
Fifty-two.
It's so crazy, because of, um, the whole recreation, Morel Pool and everything, the personal services equipment.
There's a lot of Morel in here, but not personal.
Which, which, um, yeah, it is, it is, it's just that you, you have to go down to, um, um, recreation, Morel Pool, um, it's right here, Kitty, it's right here. The problem is, there's, I mean, I would like to see.
So it's in that one-twenty, is the personal services?
Yes.
That's in the one-twenty?
Yeah.
That's not capital?
No, 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 it's just all personal services.
Okay.
Okay, um, yeah, the whole recreation thing is insane, I would really love it if it was, um, Morel Pool, personal services, equipment contractual, you know, community center, per, blah, 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 it should be that way, but because of the way.
Well, you're getting closer, I mean, you've got recreation in one place, but.
Yeah, and I took a lot out, I cut out a lot, I, you know, I said, anything that has, like, a lot of zeros, I don't really want, like, you know, and stuff, so anyway, so let me just explain a couple more things, um, in terms of the budget, um, okay, I did Morel Pool, I did the, um, ambulance, okay, so then, and now what we'll do is, we'll go back to the, oh, I will point out the fire, the fire department, right now, there's a contract that's being negotiated with the village, uh, Jason gave me a copy of the contract, they haven't agreed to it, they haven't accepted it, um, and they, but what they're asking for is two-hundred fifty-one thousand dollars, eight hundred, two-hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. They're also asking for another contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars to go into their equipment fund, or into the, um, fire, what's it called, the fire club, the fire, whatever.
The, uh, you have the fire department, and then you have the, the actual, the trucks and all the vehicles are owned by.
The fire department?
Which is the, the department, the company.
The volunteer fire company.
And then the volunteer fire company is the membership, which then operates the equipment.
Right, so they wanted another fifty thousand dollars, split twenty-five between the village and the town, I know Jason, um, is negotiating, and, um, right now, he's not supporting that at all.
Do you know, and I, do you know what's in that fund, talk to you.
Well, all I know is, from what I understand from Jean, there's quite a lot of money, and Jean was sort of saying she didn't necessarily support us doing that either, so let's have the conversation with Jean when she's here, but, um, so, right now, there was that extra fifty thousand, I knew Jason was probably not gonna agree to it, and without that extra fifty, we're already over the cap from what they asked for last year, so the increase is greater than two percent, um, so it overrides the cap, so.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
We have never seen a fire contract at the town. The village approves it, and we just get the number.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
We've seen the contract.
I mean, we approve the contract, but it, it's, we don't negotiate it, it just.
Well, I don't know, I don't know when that changed, but I can assure you.
We see the contract, we've never once.
Right, we don't negotiate it.
Well, and what I'm about to say is, what I'm shocked at is, because I can't tell you how many meetings I sat at the last, uh, last go-round, where we sat with the village board and fought over the cost of the fire contract, and the number of calls, and how they were booked, and that, cause it used to be booked based on calls, but we get three calls, they get the college calls, we had many, many, many discussions.
But we just, we just get, we get.
Well, I don't know when that changed.
A formula that says, you had, you know, the town, the town gets a lot of calls, because if it's a bad snowstorm winter, the fire department's out there taking down trees, but we don't, we don't know what the basic, we just know the bill is five hundred thousand, and the town is gonna pay fifty-five percent.
Well, we can ask, we will say that, let me put it to you this way, we will, that will change, because I know from past history, so, it's precedent, in a sense, in precedent, we always got the actual number of calls, we saw the calls, we talked about the calls, and then we actually talked about the budget, about what we can afford, what we can't.
Because it's a volunteer fire company, who pays their insurance, I, I don't know.
Well, they are a village department, they are a village department, they're volunteer, but they are, but they are a village department.
I just don't know.
That was always the thing we're paid into, the disability is paid by the village.
Village taxpayers.
The village taxpayers pay the disability insurance on the fireman, and then we pay into that low sap, the low sap fund is a retirement fund, and we pay into the retirement fund, and then we're also paying for all the miscellaneous things that go into a fire department.
The only, the one thing, though, that I had gotten when I was on vacation, and I got a phone call from Jason, um, on vacation, but I took the call from Jason, and, um, he said that one of the concerns is that actually, because they're a village fire department, and they're a volunteer village fire department, that, um, that is providing services to the town outside the village, we don't have a contract right now, that we, according to him, that he, as he's been told, we have to sign the contract by the end of the year, because if we don't sign it by the end of the year, they legally cannot provide fire services to the town.
Right, well, this, this is not a new problem, we, we are, the town is frequently accused of not acting in good faith, do we have the contract?
I have a copy of the proposed contract that Jason sent to me while I was on vacation, um, I have a copy, and I can give you, I have it up in my office, we have a copy of the proposed contract, but Jason is still negotiating, um, with them, and I actually happened to be yesterday at, um, a meeting, which I'll tell you about at the workshop, which was phenomenal, but, um, our federal, um, the guy from the federal government who oversees the, um, community partnership, so he, he is, he was here here yesterday for hours with us and stuff, it was a phenomenal meeting, but long and short, we were at Village Hall, I left to go find Jason, so I could give Jason a heads up about, you know, what we were doing with Morel Pool, and what we were doing with the ambulance and stuff, and I, I couldn't find him in his office, so I walked in, cause I heard the voices, and he was there with Stuart and Joe Ariel, and they were actually talking about the fire contract, and so, um, we had a conversation about the fire contract also, and then I, then Jason had to leave, and then that's when I sat down and told Stuart, and then Arianna came, and that's when I told them about Morel Pool, and about the ambulance and stuff, so we have to talk really soon.
I don't think anybody would say that we could get a better deal anywhere in the world than we get with the volunteer fire department, but I, I would just like to see how the number of five hundred thousand dollars gets there.[1562.47]
Well, what we'll do is, I do have it, um, I'll give you guys copies of the tentative contract. And then what we could do is, um, also say to the village that we want to actually have a meeting with them to talk about the fire contract, you know, sooner than later. But I do know that they're still trying to negotiate it themselves, so.
I thought we paid two forty-three last year, so.
Yeah, it went up, which is why I'm saying it went up.
But the final line is two twenty-six.
That's only because it's twenty-five, one sixty-five, and for some reason, there was a fund balance reserve, there was a fund balance, which Jean and I figured out must have been, because how could you have a fund balance in the fire department? You shouldn't. You get a contract, you whatever. So the only thing we could figure out was that maybe when you did the budget, you, um, estimated more for the fire than the contract ended up being. There ends up being a fund balance, so Jean and I took that to offset the cost. But even with that, so if you look at the, um, two fifty-one, eight forty-five, and you just take away the twenty-five, even with that, the two twenty-six is still over the cap.
But if it was two forty-three last year, that's why we need last years.
Well, well, you have last years in here. You just don't have it on the cover sheet. You would have it. It's just not on the cover sheet. It's never on the cover sheet. Wherever the fire, there's a separate fire budget all the way in the back by the water and sewer. There's a.
It'll be under SFD.
Yeah, it's, um.
Probably near the very back. It should be labeled SFD in somewhere.
Right here, in contingency, fire protection. It was two forty-four last year, and they're asking for two fifty-one. Two forty-four adopted, and they're asking for two fifty-one. That doesn't make sense then with the twenty-five, um, taken out. Two twenty-six, why we, but it's about, oh, you know why? Because even though the budget was two forty-four and ours is two fifty-one. Right here, right here. Two forty-four, two fifty-one. It's, but it's the amount to be raised by taxes, so I have to go back and show you the amount to be raised by taxes last year, because you might have even had a bigger fund balance or whatever. I don't know. All I know is when Jean and I went and looked, the amount to be raised by taxes exceeded two percent, so.
I don't have that.
I don't have that.
I don't have that line.
Which line?
This line, twenty-twelve adopted.
Well, that's pretty weird. You know what she pro, how could, it looks like you might not have gotten the new sheets in, um, let me see, what's, that this is, is that, um, so you have all these sheets.
Yeah, but I'm missing, I'm missing the twenty-twelve.
I don't, I don't know why that happened.
This is the one that Roseanne had just passed out.
Yeah, which I.
You all have that.
Well, you know what, Kitty, I just happen to have some extras in case anybody in the public wanted them, so let's see if, um, this one has it.
How many in the end is that?
A lot. Let me find it here. It's, um, before, um, okay, it's probably before, it's in between the sewers and the stormwater. Here Kitty, it's right here. So if you want to take this Kitty, give me this back.
I have it, I have it.
Okay, it's, uh, it's over here. You got it now?
Oh, oh, I was gonna say, you have numbered pages, but just page one. Okay.
Okay, okay.
I have it.
Okay, so anyway, that's the fire thing.
Okay.
Okay, so now just going to the highway. Um, when Jean and I put the snow plowing into the DA fund, it raised the cap on the DA fund.
What's the amount?
Of what, that we moved? I don't know, I have to go back. I mean, I guess some other things in there too and stuff, so, I, and we'll get, we'll have the details when we sit down and we do the, you know, the whatever. I'm just giving you the top lines for the moment. When we moved, what we needed to move into the DA fund, DB fund, we were already going to have to raise the cap. When we moved snow plowing into DA, it forced the cap to have to be raised in the DA. And what I said to Jean, and so we can still have a conversation, and if we want to do it, we'll do it, okay, but I said to Jean that what's going to end up happening is people are going to come in and be so upset that we're overriding the cap, because I'm upset we have to override the cap anywhere, because I'm totally against overriding the cap, you know, um, but regardless, if we want to rectify based on the controller's need, there are things we have to do, and we're going to have to just suck it up, and we have no choice. But if we override the cap in the DA fund for the purposes of putting snow plowing for the village, you know, you know, for the whole entire town into the DA fund, you're not going to just get people coming and complaining about the fact that you've already the cap. You're going to get all these residents coming in and screaming that they're paying twice for plowing, and why are we paying for the town roads? So Jean and I sort of felt that it was better to just keep it into the B fund. You wouldn't have that issue clouding the fact that we had override the cap. But I think, I guess at this point, and then Jean and I said we could always, because we were going back between so many things that we were trying to rectify and correct and stuff. So I guess we would have to go back then and defer back to our attorney, well, not our attorney, but our town board.
No, you just defer to town, actually to the highway law, which basically says, there's two sections here. Section one forty, general powers and duties of town superintendent. The town superintendent shall subject to the rules and regulations of the department made and adopted is provided in this chapter, and it goes to subsection, subsection four, within the limits of appropriations employed such persons as may be necessary for the maintenance and repair of town highways and bridges and the removal of constructions caused by snow, subject to the approval of town board and provided for, the supervision of such persons. You go to section two seventy-seven of highway law, it says, in any town in which there may be an incorporated village which forms a separate road district wherein the roads and streets are maintained at the expense of such village, all property within such village shall be exempt from the levy collection of taxes levied in the town as provided by section two hundred and sixty-seven of this chapter for the repair and improvement of highways, including sluces, culverts, and bridges having a span of less than five feet. Then it goes on to say, in addition, a town board in such town may exempt all property within such village from the levy collection of taxes levied in the town for such items provided for by subdivisions three and four of section one hundred and forty-one of this chapter. And so, item four is snow removal, so we, it's included. Or the cost is included in the town line, over the town line, and if we want to, we can choose to exempt the village from that.
Now, one of the things that Jean and I were not sure, when we were going over this, trying to figure out what was the right, what right way to represent it and the right way to go about it, we went back to sort of saying, how, you know, how do we know that the town might have exempted the village way back when? I suspect they haven't. I would believe they haven't. You know, we, um, looked at actually, I think, when that law might have gone into effect or something, and then who might have been the mayor, and then we figured there's only about like six years that Jack Stan wasn't the mayor from when that went into, you know, so.
The leading case, the leading case.
Is New Paul. Oh, right, we went from that.
Is DeBois versus, uh, New Pauls in this section, which they challenged it before.
Right. Which. Right. And it was DeBois, just so you can explain it again, DeBois was a village resident and challenged the town for putting snow plowing in the A fund, am I?
That's basically true.
Okay, and what ended up happening was they lost. They lost, right. So just let me, just, let me just, just real quick, from that, so it was from that lawsuit to, um, actually Jackson, we were trying to figure out like mayors and trying to get history, so it was between that lawsuit and when Jack Stan started being the mayor.
Jack was the attorney.
Jackson, attorney for the village, uh, yeah, attorney for the village, that there's only about a five-year break, and so we thought we'd call Jack and say, do you remember the town ever exempting the village? And then there'd be five years we could never track back to.
What, what do you have to do to create an exemption? Do you just say, you're exempt? Do you have a local law? How do you do that?
It's, the law already provides the authority for the town to do what we've done before. And, and looking at the case note for DeBois versus Town Board, Town New Pauls, says this section, which is two seventy-seven, which gives the town board the authority to exempt if they want to. This section permitting a town board to exempt all property within a village embraced within the town's territorial limits from levy collection taxes for such highway and bridge items as machinery and tools and snow removal is not unconstitutional. Notwithstanding claim to the village, that village residents receive no benefit from taxes paid by village taxpayers when town board refuses to grant exemption since maintenance of highways outside village benefits village itself, and in various instances, village would otherwise be landlocked.
I mean.
That was the highest score in your state.
This, this just goes to so many senior citizens who pay school taxes and say, I haven't had a child in the school district for thirty years. Why am I paying school taxes? I mean, we all pay taxes for services we may not feel we're using, that we don't get the benefit of. But in this case, I mean, I don't know if we can take an action tonight, but I would rather, we, you know, it is on the agenda. We have four board members here. I would like to get that back, because it was in the DA fund.
Well, it was in the A, it was in the A fund, not the DA.
No, it was in the DA last year.
Let's put it this way, I think it has to be in the A fund unless we decide otherwise.
In the DA.
I think it's the DA fund. It can't, yeah, I think it might have been, I have to double check, but I think it was in the A fund.
DA.
Yeah, yeah. No, it was in DA.
No, no, um, well, actually, we can look really quickly and see right now if, um, I don't think it was in DA. That's why when we moved it into DA, it put us over the cap. If it was in the DA last year, it wouldn't be a problem.
With snow removal?
Right, yeah.
I, I mean, I, I remember getting some irate village people looking at the DA fund and saying,
Yeah. Yeah.
I've never driven on Shivertown Road. Why do I have to, you know, say it's snow removal?
Yeah, well, one could say you never, that, I've, you know, um, I'm pretty sure it was in the A fund, and Jean and I were both, and Jean and I were basically, well, if it's going to be in the A fund, it's got to be in the DA fund, and when we moved it to the DA fund, it put us over the cap, which is why we ended up having the conversation. I don't have a problem with this, and again, remember, this is just, you know, my basic feeling about this tentative budget, in all honesty.
It looks like we put half in the DA fund.
Yeah, I mean, this is.
And the other half in the A fund or something, or in the DB or?
And in, in, in DB, because in DAA, you go to, because you go to the corresponding DAA, five two two, uh, fifty-one, forty-two, one hundred would be personnel service, that would be snow removal, personnel services is under DAA. So I think Kitty, half, I don't believe a hundred percent, I believe, but maybe.
Yeah, it definitely, it definitely wasn't all in the DA fund, because if it was all in the DA fund, then Jean and I putting that into the DA fund would have not affected the cap.
I, I remember the DA fund being around three hundred and fifty thousand last year.
Well, the DAA was two sixty adopted Kitty, one sixty, so only a hundred, uh, sixty-six percent was put into DAA last year.
Is that, you've got last year there?
Yeah.
So anyway, we don't have to, honestly, right now, I mean, we can get to the nitty, we can get into the nitty gritty of the numbers a little bit more when we do our workshop kind on the budget, because then I could bring last year's workshop workbooks, and I could bring this year's workbooks, and we can whatever. And I'm actually having Patty do some work on all this. So if we, and again, my basic feeling about this tentative budget is, do I expect to see potential changes? Absolutely. What we were trying to do was, A, correct what we perceived as a lot of problems in last year's budget, correct a lot of money that we believed was spent that didn't need to be spent, try to move things according to the controller to where things needed to be. And so, I believe that as we go through the process, you know, we might, you know, I mean, we'll make whatever changes we want. That'll become a primary budget. So if we should decide, if we should decide to move it all back into the DA, you know, and we have to override the cap, because that's what we need to do to make it right, rectify it. You know, it's not, it's not our fault.
Wait, but how, how much more would go into DA?
Well, but Kitty, you're right, though.
A couple, oh, like a hundred, two hundred thousand.
But wait, Kitty, that's, I, I just want to go back for a second. Kitty is actually, you're correct Kitty, it's actually a hundred percent was in D, in the DA fund last year. We had, uh, fortunately, we had a third less snow than we anticipated.
Ah.
So that's why there's a difference in funds, because there is zero in the twenty-twelve DBB. So one hundred percent, so we budgeted last year, and, and the budget numbers, and we came, Mike did actually an excellent job going back and finding where all the state sites are to tell you what to expect in fuel costs. So we budgeted two sixty, we're budgeting two fifty-five, which is, which is fine, same number. But the difference is, is now we're moving it to DBB out of DAA. So we didn't, a hundred percent was funded last year in DAA, and that was disagreeing.
No, we're going the other direction.
Well, well.
So no, now we're putting it into DBB.
We can move, we can move it back in, like I said, it's not.
It's in, it's in DB right now.
And it should be in DA.
That's what I'm saying. We could go back and do it, that's, you know, and we can work all the numbers again. I'm just saying that it raises a cap in a couple, you know, then you have the cap raised a couple lines, but we'll do what we have.
I don't understand how it raises the cap when that's what it was last year.
No, because you actually, I have to go back and double check, you know, because at least in the worksheets, I don't think that was what the case is, but I'll double check Jeff.
No, it's very possible, but, yeah.
You know, and stuff, and, um, but also there's more expenses moved into the DA line.
But that should leave us a hundred thousand fund balance, so.
Because Chris now, um, he's the only have a small smidgen of his secretary now. He's, Carol West is there full time, because we moved buildings and grounds, you know, over there, and, um, there are other expenses and other costs that have got in there that raised whatever. And then because you don't have really any revenue to offset, but I'll, I'll, I'll do the math for you, so.
So, so Carol is in DA?
Is going to be full time. That's his, always his, because it's his secretary.
Oh, yeah, 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 right, right. Yeah, okay, now that, that makes sense.
We should be having a hundred thousand fund bal, well, ninety thousand dollar fund balance coming over from the DAA fund. Well, because we build last year, we put two sixty in, we only have spent one sixty. Pretty small chance that we're going to spend a hundred thou, we're going to spend ninety thousand dollars on snow removal and the remainder of the year. I mean, knock on wood, absolutely, we could get some debt. You're absolutely right.
If you, if you leave DA the way it was last year, then you don't, you may not need to override the DB.
I think, I, I, I think, I think it still was overwritten because of, um, um, I think there were some other things got moved in there and stuff. Well, let, let me put it to, I, I asked Patty to go back and do like a much more thorough analysis of, you know, um, and also, I don't think the percentages of how, because, um, Chris now has buildings and grounds also, when he allocated all the men and the manpower, the percentages, whatever, he might have changed percentages in terms of, so let me put it to you this way. Last year, you might have, um, done percentages differently. Because you have some of highway in A, in DA, some of it in DB, and blah, blah, and it was the first year of the cap, and you were trying to whatever. What I think was that some of the percentages and numbers and time, whatever, was played around to put them into the funds where you could meet your cap, have your fund balance and whatever. It didn't reflect what, what.
Well, I mean, let's be perfectly honest. When you know the tax cap is coming at you, you try and get every line as close as you can to the cap, so that that's where you're starting from the next year.
No, 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 but what I'm saying is, what I think is where you see some differences in here is the allocation of manpower might have been done to meet the needs of what you had to do to be under the cap versus reflecting your true hours. Chris gave me what his true hours are, how he's billing each guy, and whatever Chris gave me, I did not touch, play around with, or whatever. If that's what it costs to do snow plowing, that's what it costs. If that's what it costs to do general repairs, that's what it costs. If that's what it costs, whatever, I didn't touch his numbers. But if I wanted to play with keeping things under the cap, I could say, you know what, Chris, don't charge so much money to this. Charge it more here, because this isn't a fund I have room with, and this is a fund I don't have room with. Well, that's why I'm saying this reflects to the best of our ability, what we believe is the true expenses to run every single solitary department to the best of our ability, and let the numbers fall out where they may. And so, you know, Jean and I made a choice on the DB, but we could put it back in the DA. And when we, when we do our workshops and stuff, I can have the numbers ready for us when we do highway for us to see all the implications and look at the numbers and stuff. Patty's drafting, I asked Patty to go back and do some analysis on highway from last year to this year, so we could all better understand it, because, again, I was just working with the spreadsheets that Chris gave me. You know, and I wasn't going back through history to like look at how things were really allocated and stuff, so I asked her to do a little bit more in-depth work for me to sort of have us, help us understand, you know, the number, you know, the, the split of the guys in the highway department.
Well, it definitely, I, I think we need to go back and look at the numbers very heavily on, on expended balance, because it, I, I think there's more money in the unexpended balance funds here, because like if I just look at even snow removal line, snow removal line in DA has a ninety-fourth, almost a ninety-five thousand dollar difference. But it's, we're not, I, I mean, you know, again, knock on wood, I don't know if we're going to, we could get, we absolutely could get two places.
Can you imagine? I mean, that, that's a scary line to.
Well, no, ninety-four thousand is, is the fund balance, pretty, which is pretty substantial fund balance, and I don't picture us spending eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I think, I think.
But do, we, we don't want to lower that line and then get hit with a storm a day.
I absolutely agree.
There was, there was, Jean and I also talked about, is there, you're right, Jeff, there is more fund balance than, and we could have used more to reduce it and stuff, but I, the reason we chose not to, um, was first you have to, you know, because you're right, you can get it with massive snowstorms and whatever, and then you have to take the money, and you don't know what your budget's going to be. Remember, everything we do this year sets us up for what we can do next year, because this becomes now the tax rate that now we can only go two percent next year, okay? And, and, what?
What do you mean, two percent?
The two percent cap, the tax cap.
If you, if you cut your snow removal budget.
Does this mean you go up?
No, 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 that's assuming you go up, but I'm just saying it's still, it's still, it's still your, whatever. But so then, if you look at the state retirement numbers, that are just so exponentially going up, okay? Well, we, we went down, okay? But it still doesn't matter. We went down, and now we can set a higher bar for ourselves next year, okay? But anyway, so, again, now, so the state retirement numbers have gone up exponentially. Medical's going up exponentially. Excuse me?
Exponentially.
Expo, whatever the hell it is, it's going up that way, okay? It's going up.
It's going up, isn't it?
Okay, it's going up. So, at a certain point, in certain lines, when you don't have revenue, okay, you can't get revenue out of highway. There's nothing you can do to get revenue out of highway. So as the state retirement goes up in that line, you've got to find the money someplace.
You know, something, that, that used to be true when I went across the Hudson Bridge.
What?
Now I see the Geico sign on the, we should just get Geico to put signs on our tracks.
I have no problem.
I go across the bridge, you see the little arms that come up.
There's Geico on them. I think before that.
So you're right. Before they didn't generate revenue.
Right, exactly. Well, if there's a way to generate revenue, then you know what? We could take all the fund balance. We could take all the fund balance.
No, I think magnetic signs and the signs on the highway cars.
If we take, if we, if we do that.
Kevin Berry Law, Esquire. What do you want to pay?
Hey, it's worth something.
We'll negotiate, yeah.
No, really, seriously. In a snowstorm, if, in an accident because of a snowstorm, call me. But anyway, well, the truth is, though, the truth.
Yeah, Mike behind a snow truck, you know.
Because I do really want to go home tonight, okay?
They really asked for that?
Um, yes.
For personal services?
Um, no, it's, it's, um, but, but it's grand. It's grand. Again, there's revenue on the other line.
Oh, for one of the grant things. Gotcha, gotcha.
So, um, I just want to really wrap up, because I really do want to.
No, no, no.
Yeah, let's go.
So, um, what was I going to say? So again, Jeff, yeah, there was more money, Jeff, um, Jean and I talked about the fund balance. And then we just sort of said, you know what, because we're already going over the cap, it's like, let's not put ourselves in more harm's way next year when we don't know what the retirement is, if it's going to be stuff, and what kinds of snowstorms are going to be, and then we're going to be in really bad shape next year. So we can make decisions as we go forward, you know, but still.
Well, at some point, though, we're going to have to, if we want to exceed the cap, we're going to have to vote to make a.
Yeah, we looked it up. We have to use, we can do it by resolution.
How, how do you handle an unexpended balance in something like your snow removal fund?
Well, it doesn't stay there. I mean, because it's, I, I just don't know if it's, I, I don't, well.
No, no, what ends up happening is if we.
I just don't know if we need to, I, I just, I, I'm, well, what does, reduces your next year's budget, so I, I just don't know if, I'm calling it ninety-four thousand, right, because that's where it is right now. But I'm questioning whether only crediting ten thousand of that, and, and I'm just trying, I, I don't know if that's giving it enough credit. I, I, I can't lose that.
I mean, it's very scary.
Well.
I think you're better off keeping the buffers as big as you can.
Yeah, I mean, at least in that line.
I, I'm just using that line as an example. I mean, that's, that's a, that's just.
Well, no, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that we did look, I, 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 um, what happens if there's none, if, you know, you budget for so much snow. If we don't use, if it doesn't snow, then that money doesn't get used, it goes back, it goes into the fund balance. If then you, when you, the next year, do your expenses, if you don't spend more money in your expenses, you know, you still have that fund balance. Could we probably take more? We probably could. It was just that when Jean and I looked at it and had the incentive to talk, the decision was, we think we need it for next year, but we can always make a decision as we're going along that we take more in the primary budget, you know, we'll see that when we.
But you can't take the unexpended balance from snow removal and put it in the general fund.
No, 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 we're not talking about that. I'm talking, oh, no, 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 no. Oh, that's why you're cute. No, no, I'm talking about, no, no.
No, not that. When I could, we could reduce. No. No, but Kitty, we could reduce our snow removal a lot. You could reduce your following years.
We could, we could reduce, that's right.
And that's then we're, then we're in big trouble.
Right, but I don't think we had as much, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, if it snows.
Right, exactly. So that's, no, I just meant the fund balance, I just meant the fund balance from the DB and the fund balance from the DA.
Your big delivery of warming. Okay.
And the fund balance from the B and the fund balance from the whatever. So each fund balance is only relative to its, uh, yeah, okay.
Right. That's, we, we agree. I just.
And just, and global warming just means extreme weather, so I, even though.
So anyway, now what.
Well, we have had winters where it snows every day, and it's melted by that night, but they still have to be out there in the morning.
So anyway, the only last thing to just say real quickly is just in sewer six, what you'll see is, right now, the numbers are pretty staggering, and, um, we have that abstracted from the perspective of that significant issues need to be solved with the DEC and the controller. So hopefully, the poor taxpayers out in sewer six are not gonna get hit with these numbers. But right now, those reflect, you know, what the cost of running sewer six from a operational perspective is. And, um, but truthfully, tax increase to those residents.
What was that revenue line on six last year?
On what? There is no revenue line, um, the only thing that you could, um.
When we have revenue, you get billing on. Now, what was it last year, you know, just to give you some. How much did we collect? Were we collecting fees? Probably, uh, kitty, help me here, maybe a thousand dollars, it's, I don't know, uh, forty thousand?
Uh.
Yeah, but, uh, honestly, I.
Sixty-eight thousand.
There you go, sixty-eight, she got it, the businesses, because we collected more from the businesses.
But we only got fifteen thousand as of September, I guess the billing hasn't gone out.
Yeah, but still, even if the billing goes out from fifteen to sixty-eight, we only is, pretty major.
I remember looking at Dave's report, it was around forty-something thousand.
I think, I think, um, honestly, I think a lot of things, I think a lot of costs to sewer six were not truly charged to sewer six, because it, so it's, I just think, in a way, to defray the constant expenses to sewer six that sometimes things might have been charged somewhere else.
Well, we put sixty-eight thousand in. Now, as of September seventeenth, we've gotten fifteen thousand, but that means that probably we have two quarters of billing.
Well, she just, she just did the billing yesterday and today.
Okay.
So that will be for, um, this last quarter.
And even so, we're way behind.
Yeah, yeah, so I have to, um, yeah, like, again, I said sewer six is strange. So I have to check more into that, but I also told Dave that we have to know that the budget is at least.
But I think we must have meant to raise rates, I mean, if we thought we were gonna get sixty-eight thousand in.
Well, you might not have raised them. I'll have to go back and look.
We did. We should, we should see if the rates are, uh, can you see what the sewer rates are compared to the prior year?
I would get it from, look at it, look at it from Chrissy.
Oh, okay.
Look at it from Chrissy. Anyway, long and short is, and one of the things that I, I, Patty just sent me, one of the things, um, where we have to get, which Patty just sent me, but I haven't looked at it yet, I only saw the, there's three hundred thou, over three hundred thousand dollars that's owed, that's been borrowed, that's owed from the sewer and water funds, that has to go back, you know, that's been borrowed from the A fund, that's been borrowed from whatever, it's close to three hundred thousand dollars. So we have to figure out how we're going to pay that money back to the funds, you know, that lent that money. So Patty said she just sent me the bigger spreadsheet, said, remember, Jeff, when you said how hard it's gonna be to find that information? Supposedly, they've been keeping track of it, supposedly, they have it, supposedly, I have this major file, and when I print it out, we will all look and share, but once we look at that and get a handle on that, we're gonna, during this process, have to figure out how we're gonna even handle that and sort of take that on. And that's independent of this, but that's a big issue, but it's just another thing to take on. So, anyway, um, calendars, so we can figure out, you know, I have to see what might.
Which one would you rather want? That's true, it's a lot more.
Yeah, that's good. So, uh.
Well, I'm just trying to get some, uh, I'm just trying to look at some event that I have to.
We set hearing dates.
Well, not hearing dates, dates for us to get together and work on the budget.
Available Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday next week.
Okay, so you're available Monday, Tuesday.
Monday's a holiday.
Monday, nobody's available. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I'm available Monday.
Well, I'm not.
It's a paid holiday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Well, that's right, yeah.
Um, so Kevin, you're available Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Not Friday.
Not Friday?
I am not available Thursday next week.
Okay, so no kidding.
I'm available for seven on, or you wanna start early? I can probably do six, three.
Okay, no kidding. Jeff, your nights?
Uh, Tuesday, uh, after seven, and Wednesday, I'm good.
After seven, and Wednesday, um, this is Jeff.
Name the time.
Okay, okay, and Wednesday is okay for Jeff. Okay, I have to double check with Jean, and then I have to just try to find this one event, to see what night it is. It doesn't matter, I can let you guys know, so.
Yeah, let us know.
And what about the following week, um, the following week, what nights, uh?
I think I have my last, uh, planning meeting on the fifteenth.
Which is what day?
Uh, Monday the fifteenth.
Well, Monday night, I have, uh, we've been, my fin, the finance committee has been meeting every week for now.
So we have something.
We're meeting every week.
So we have something.
You haven't convened your committee, have you?
We have, hey.
The finance committee will take it off.
We have the, uh, so we have a town board meeting in the following?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have one.
I think the only night that's gonna work is the sixteenth.
Oh, that's the follow, that's the follow, that's, oh, 'cause this is already the first week of October.
Eighteen, twenty-fifth.
So the Thursday, the eight, Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So Thursday, we have a town board meeting.
So how's Tuesday the sixteenth?
Okay, um, um, so kitty, you can do Tuesday?
I can do Tuesday.
And Jeff, you can do Tuesday after seven, right?
The sixteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
After seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's National Boss Day, whatever.
Okay, and, and what about Wednesday?
Are we confirming this?
And Monday, neither you nor I could do this, no, because I have to double check with Jean, and I really would like to have Jean here. And I still have to find this one, we have with more recently, more rough all that.
So are we saying what time, seven?
We could do seven, we could, well, after seven, Jeff can't do it till after seven, if we do it on.
So do seven fifteen?
And we'll have dinner here for Jeff.
I'm good, I, I'm at least your words.
Um.
And did we decide on the week before, what, so are we doing Tuesday, or you're gonna wait to hear from Jean?
Well, I'm gonna confirm everything with Jean, but I'm also just trying to see if I can find this one event that. I can't find one of them. Um, okay, so, right, as, and Kevin, the following week, are you okay, um, Tuesday and Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're okay Tuesday, Wednesday? So, okay, so for now, we have, as long as Jean's okay, we can do next Tuesday, next Wednesday, and the following Tuesday and Wednesday.
I, I cannot do Wednesday the seventeenth, that's historic reservation.
Well, Tuesday and Wednesday of next week is CBA and C Wasp and Police Commission.
Well, we could still, we could meet my office and they can, and they can, um, we can have the cameras in there.
Well, we can have a budget meeting in community center.
Well, then.
The Police Commission is at the Community Center on Wednesday, and CBA is here Tuesday.
Well, they can, they, we can do it in my office and have the TV camera in there.
Well, what's a TV?
Do you want me to ask C Wasp if they wanna meet in your office?
They can do that, that's great.
Kind of big, uh.
I'll ask.
Yeah, but why don't we wait and see till I confirm what date's available for Jean? And then I just have to check one date for myself, that I don't, I can't find it. But, um, but I'll double check that. Okay, so I at least have some dates right now to play with, okay?
I, I, the only dates I have are the ninth and the sixteenth.
That you're available for?
No, but we've confirmed.
We haven't confirmed anything, because I have to get with Jean to see what she's available for. And I still have to confirm one day that I know that it's either next week or we can't be. I just wanted to get, I want, I wanted to have at least a, a list of stuff, um, so I can at least work with it. I pretty much, it's only just one day I can't do, but I don't know what it is.
We're gonna at least two or three days.
And then I have, yeah, and then I have to see, uh, what Jean can do, and then we can schedule like three meetings if we can, you know, to just start like, you know, mapping community departments, okay?
Make a motion to adjourn meeting.
Okay, little favor?
Hi.
Motion so carried.